Good evening. Welcome to the continuation of the Tuesday, April 14th, Elmhurst Board of Education meeting. The Board has five members present, two absent this evening, and we've been in closed sessions since six o'clock discussing negotiations and employment of employee. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next is the very best part of any Board of Education meeting. And this evening, we are completely dedicated to recognition of the people who work here, which is fabulous. Let me turn it over to Dave.
Yes, this evening, we're going to start that recognition by introducing our newly certified, National Board certified teacher. She is from Field Elementary School, but I'm going to let Tammy do the introductions. Tammy Poole, Principal of Field Elementary. Tammy, if you want to come up and introduce our nationally certified teacher.
Good evening, and thank you for this honor tonight to introduce Deana Capua to all of you. She is the ELL teacher at Field, and it's such an enormous privilege for me to introduce her as a National Board certified teacher. She's worked so hard for this, but most importantly, she is such an asset to Field School. She gives 100% to our students on a daily basis. She loves her job. Her passion for teaching ELL students is so obvious. Her rapport with them is very visible. When you walk in the room, you can just feel the positive energy between her and her students. She has an extensive knowledge base, even more so now with her National Board certified, but she is just such a blessing to the students, the parents, the staff, and to myself as well. Thank you.
I have a particularly long proclamation to read, and I think maybe we make them length and commensurate with the accomplishment. So bear with me. Whereas on December 3rd, 2014, the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards publicly announced the latest class of National Board certified teachers, which is the highest honor in the teaching profession can bestow, and whereas Illinois traditionally outpaces the nation with a high numbers of nationally Board certified teachers, frequently ranking among the top five states with the most new nationally Board certified teachers. And whereas, this designation is bestowed upon teachers who meet high and rigorous standards through intensive study, expert evaluation, self-assessment, and peer review. And whereas, national Board certified teachers are called upon to act as role models, as spokespersons, in the effort to build and strengthen the teaching profession, to provide advice, assistance, and mentoring to new and experienced teachers, and to use their knowledge to help form education policy, restructure curriculum, and/or pilot innovative teaching strategies. And whereas, in 2013, 2014, a total of 205 Illinois teachers achieved this prestigious certification, with more than 4,000 teachers nationwide achieving national Board certification through a performance-based peer review process similar to Board certification in medicine. And whereas, to date, more than 110,000 teachers in all 50 states in the District of Columbia have achieved the profession's gold standard for accomplished teaching based upon standards created by teachers for teachers that define what teachers should know and be able to do to advance student learning. And whereas, Field Elementary School English Language Learner Specialist, Deana Caputa -- did I get that?
Capula.
Capula, I apologize.
No problem.
Join the members of the 2013-14 class of National Board certified teachers with a certification in English as a new language/early and middle childhood, and whereas the addition of this exemplary educator brings the total of currently active District 205 nationally Board certified teachers to 18. And whereas, this accomplishment brings pride and prestige to Field Elementary School, to District 205, and to the community of Elmhurst. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of the Elmhurst Community Unit District 205 express congratulations to our 2014 National Board certified teacher, Deana Caputa, for this outstanding achievement. A long proclamation that I think deserves a standing ovation. We know this is a pride, and we really appreciate it.
No problem.
Now, can we, as an expression of our appreciation, make you go around the front of the table and shake every Board member's hand?
Absolutely.
Because we're all privileged to shake yours.
Okay.
Thank you.
Our next recognition is a very special one that we started this year. This is to recognize all the unheralded heroes that we have in the district that often go unrecognized and do the great things for our district above and beyond the call of duty that sometimes we overlook. And so shining star is an opportunity for colleagues to nominate other colleagues for people that they see doing outstanding things for the district and for our district students. So we have a number of shining stars this evening, and we are going to be calling, I believe what we do now is call everybody up at once, and then the Board members will announce those individually and then give you the certificates, and then you have to walk the gauntlet of shaking hands at the end. So you're not going to get off scot-free. So with that, if the shining star individuals would come to the front and just stand in front of the Board, then Board members will start to recognize.
Okay, I'm going to start with Effie Nassis, 7th grade English REACH teacher at Bryan Middle School, nominated by Michael Johnson and Jeremy Thomas. Effie has established herself as a confident progressive educator, always pushing herself to do what's best for students. As a teacher, Effie is in constant motion. She's always adjusting, growing, challenging, rethinking, and improving. Rather than accepting good enough, she's always working at making the learning experience better. Her motivation and leadership has a powerful and positive impact on those around her. And Kim Neeson, social worker at Hawthorne, nominated by Barb Boslett and Laura Scarlett. Through the years, Kim has tirelessly advocated on behalf of all students, but particularly for those who are struggling with life changes or ongoing personal challenges. Kim somehow finds time to visit classrooms, meet with individuals and small groups, create support materials, and still greet everyone with a genuine smile and welcoming words. Kim manages each crisis with confidence. Even bad news is wrapped in hope when she speaks. Kim leads all of her students and their families in accepting and meeting their challenges. More importantly, she leads everyone in recognizing and celebrating their successes.
And I have the honor and privilege to recognize two of our staff members as well. First, Linda Fuller. She's a counselor at Bryan. She was nominated by Heather Bowler and Diane Danielczek. Linda always finds time to meet with students and parents. She creates a warm and inviting atmosphere, which enables both students and parents to feel comfortable talking to her. Linda has played an integral role through her work on the PBIS Celebrations Committee and in planning school-wide celebrations of student achievements. In addition, she never ceases to encourage and support fellow staff members with her infectious smile and good humor. Congratulations to Linda Fuller. And Nora Graff, 5th grade teacher at Hawthorne. She was nominated by Jerry Sorrentino and Molly Angov. Nora quickly volunteers to help with many activities, such as listening to students' memorization on Pi Day. It was quite lengthy this year, I hear. During her lunch hour and offering primary math help to students during her free time. She readily shares ideas and materials with her team and is a leader in the building. She goes above and beyond her role as classroom teacher and helps and participates at all levels with great ideas and enthusiasm. Thank you, Nora.
I have the honor of honoring Kat Kuziel and Jessica Larson. We'll start with Kat. Is Kat here? Hi. Reading specialist at Bryan, nominated by Kurt Baumeister, Lisa Dahlquist, Rob Mangan and Sarah Samp. Kat is always putting the students' learning first and helps the teachers help students reach their greatest potential. In addition to Kat's work with the entire staff, she's an integral part of the weekly PLC meetings. She makes it a priority to help create units, design best practice lessons, and model and co-teach in the classrooms. Thank you, Kat. And do we have Jessica Larson? Hi, Jessica. Psychologist at Hawthorne and Lincoln, nominated by Danielle Fritz and Nikki Tamru. Jessica makes the extra effort to support students, staff, and parents in the district. She makes herself available to help in any way she possibly can. Her passion for knowledge is evident. Organizing lunch and learns and sending out useful resources are just two of the ways she demonstrates her appetite to learn and share knowledge. Thank you, Jessica.
And I have the honor to read the nomination for Ashley Skinner and Howard Studeni. Thank you. So Ashley is the art teacher at Churchville. She's nominated by Kristen Olson, Paula Melz, and Marina Hagen. As a mentor, Ashley ensures that her mentee is succeeding every step of the way. She's extremely involved at Churchville and puts everyone else beside herself, before herself. On top of teaching her art classes and being a mentor, Ashley hosts art club three days a week, is in charge of the yearbook, coaches 8th grade girls volleyball, heads the Celebration Committee for PBIS, and works with students during lunch and after school. She is always willing to help anyone in need. I know Ashley's not here, but thank you very much, Ashley. And now I also have the honor of nominating, of recognizing Howard Studeni, the custodian at Edison, nominated by Martha McGreal, Dorothy Hamby, and Erica Moe. Howard is attentive to every detail in and around Edison. He is called on constantly to fix things, move things, clean up, clean up things. He makes Edison School shine inside and out, and does it all with a smile. And he's smiling now. One particular act stands out. Thursday, February 26th, started with six inches of new snow. Howard arrived at school to discover that the snow blower wasn't working. He proceeded to shovel by hand the entire perimeter of Edison School. That same day, the entire student body was planning to walk to Sandberg to watch their production of Cinderella. To facilitate the walk of 300 students, Howard also cleared the entire route between Edison and Sandberg. Thank you very much, Howard.
And it is my honor to introduce Denise Hamilton. Hi, Denise. And Patty Giraud. Hey, Patty. Denise Hamilton is a counselor at Churchville, nominated by Jessica Walker and Gina Poe Greer. Denise plays a large role in the success of PBIS at Churchville. Besides being a member of the Tier Two team, Denise is the check-in, check-out coordinator for the school. Denise is a staff member who goes above and beyond for her students and is always willing to help out a fellow staff member in a time of need. Denise, thank you. And Patty Giraud, who I happen to have a little history with, and I'll tell you after I read this. Nominated by Kim James, Susan Hayes, Kerry Emrickson, Sally Del Rio, Kendall Wright, Kaitlin Johnson, Kerry Pianki? I apologize if I've screwed up your last name, Kerry. And Robbie Osling. Got a big fan club. Patty always has a positive attitude and is the glue that joins the special education team with the general education team. Patty lives by "every student is everyone's responsibility" and spreads that optimistic attitude with the staff. She always puts forth extra effort to assist with scheduling of school-wide assessments in addition to remaining very flexible with her reading intervention schedule. Her knowledge of readings helps students succeed. Patty? Now, actually, I just want to add my story. My, both of my daughters went to Edison, and my youngest, who's adopted from China, came over and first and second grade had trouble being able to read. Under Patty's tutelage, Patty instilled not only the ability to read, but the passion to read in my daughter. And now that daughter is in 6th grade in REACH Language Arts. Without Patty, she couldn't have achieved it. Thank you. So for anybody who's got papers to grade, things to do, we'll take a short break before a couple of public comments, but only like 30 seconds if anybody wants to be on their way for the evening. Now, for public comments, I don't have any of the blue cards up here. Is there anybody here that came to say something to the Board? Okay, hearing none? We'll move on to superintendent's communication. Mr. Prunow.
Let me just say that when I was the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum in another district, these were the kind of board nights I really looked forward to because it's all about curriculum and learning, and it got turned over to curriculum. My colleagues would always moan and say it's going to be a long meeting. And so just to give that disclaimer, because I've been there, I know how this works, but it's really got some good stuff to present to the Board this evening, starting with District Improvement Plan. And I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Fitzgerald, who will walk us through this part of the agenda.
I'm going to stay here for the presentations because we're going to have a very interactive podium at some point today with the MLI, so just to keep this going. And I understand Mr. Prunow's long conversation because I've gotten that this week, that this is going to be a long Board meeting. And that, it is good. It's very good. We're going to start with the District Improvement Plan. We were required to submit a District Improvement Plan. I don't know if that's me. I don't know. This year, and I'll go over why in a couple of slides, but I always like to start with all of the staff members that get involved in any project that we embark on in the district. And so these first two slides really focus on everybody that took part in discussing the District Improvement Plan for this year. There was a very short timeframe because typically we know in October if we have to do a District Improvement Plan. We were not told until late February that we needed to do a District Improvement Plan. And so the timing, and I really appreciate all these people being able to come together to help us get this, but that's one slide and two slides. All of the teachers and administrators who got together to work on the District Improvement Plan. Now, why? Why did we need to write a District Improvement Plan? We must meet AMAOs annually. And I thought I put the, what the acronym stands for, and I have it on mine. It's the Annual Measurable Achievement Objectives. AMAO stand for the Annual Measurable Achievement Objectives. You must meet those annually. Numbers 1 and 2, and this is for our ELL students. Numbers 1 and 2, the percentage of students who make progress in learning English and the percentage of students who become proficient in English is measured through the access test. Number 3, adequate yearly progress for English language learners based on student test participation, graduation, attendance, and achievement in reading and math determined by the ISET. We have made, we have met 1 and 2. Where we are not meeting is in the achievement in reading and math on number 3. And what happens is every time you don't meet, you need to write a District Improvement Plan. When you don't meet four years in a row, you have to make some changes to your program, your curriculum, and your instruction. We are now in our fourth year. And so that's why you might, if the District Improvement Plan has some changes in terms of curriculum, programming, and instruction. So I want to just highlight, because the DIP is a very long document, just want to really focus on, highlight where some of the changes have occurred. In terms of programming changes, we're moving towards a co-teaching and a coaching model as opposed to a pull-out program, where the students stay in their classroom. The ELL teacher, who is considered an expert in working with ELL students, will be more going into the classroom, co-teaching with the teacher, or doing small group work right in the classroom, which also provides that coaching so that the classroom teacher who's in the room is able to see how the ELL teacher works best with our ELL students. And again, ELL resource teachers acting as coach, they are our expert. They know how to work with our ELL students. Good ELL instruction is good instruction. But ELL students have certain requirements in terms of, they need words acted out for them. They need different, what we would call TPR, different ways to get kids to understand some of the terminology, the vocabulary. We need to provide different background knowledge for them. Our ELL resource teachers act as that coach. We've also hired additional psychologists in ELL staff. As you know, we've come to you with some additional FTE requirements. And what I do want to say with the DIP, we're not focusing the DIP just on our ELL kids. If you really look at it, it is a true District Improvement Plan. Yes, there are some strategies that we've incorporated that will be unique to our ELL population, but we also are looking at this as a true District Improvement Plan. Bringing in psychologists will assist with all of our students, not just our ELL students. In terms of curriculum changes, we are bringing in a new curriculum development process that actually, a little commercial, will be discussed at the Learning and Teaching Board Committee on Monday, discussing the new curriculum development process that will bring in what are called the Illinois New Learning Standards, which are the Common Core standards. We have to make sure that our ELL students have access to the WIDA standards, and we have to make sure that those standards are in our curriculum, that they're not separate. They are standards, the ELD stands for English Language Development. That's for our ELL kids. And bilingual literacy. When we develop our first round of curriculum, it will be literacy. We will be working with our bilingual teachers to think through, English literacy is different than bilingual literacy. When you learn Spanish literacy, there's a lot of parallel to it, but there's also some places where bilingual literacy looks different than English literacy. We need to make sure that we spell that out in the curriculum so that all of our students have access to the same rigor of curriculum whether they're bilingual students or not. In terms of instruction, our big highlights for instruction are, as you know, we've really started a focus on assessment in our district, and formative assessment more specifically. We purchased the Dylan Woolam, William, he pronounces his name William, I've mispronounced it, Dylan William, formative assessment book. We also brought him in. That got great reviews from our staff members. They want to continue this conversation of how are we assessing students on a daily basis to assure that they're learning every day and that our instruction matches what they need. We are going to start working on an instructional protocol as a district define what does good instruction look like. We're going to turn that into a protocol so all of our buildings, all of our PLCs, all of our classroom teachers have access to. As a district, this is what we say is good instruction, and they're able to dive deeper into certain areas they want to dive deeper into. School leadership teams can focus professional learning needs on different areas that they're building needs, but we're going to be developing that. We are working with Elmhurst College to offer an ESL cohort for our teachers, teachers who are interested in getting the ESL endorsement. We've met with Elmhurst College. It would be a one-year program, I believe, and it would allow us to get more ESL endorsed teachers. Very exciting. We had tremendous response of teachers interested from all of our schools in getting that endorsement. And we're going to be starting an ELL leadership team where every building will be sending leadership, teachers, building leaderships, to the district for some work on ELL. Again, what is ELL instruction? How do we want to roll that out in our building? And again, good ELL instruction is really good instruction. How do we work with all of our students? So those are the highlights that you would have found in the DIP as you read the 20 different indicators that we had to assess and say how we were going to move forward. And then the next steps. You will be approving it tonight. It's on for it to be approval. We will be submitting it to ISBE. As I said, we will be beginning the curriculum development this summer. We have a curriculum development team already identified with teachers, reading specialists, instructional tech coaches, bilingual teachers, ELL teachers, librarians, every stakeholder group represented on our curriculum development team. ELL leadership will begin in the fall, and of course, we will always be continuing our professional learning on good instruction, formative assessment, ELL learners. Questions?
We've had to do the school improvement plans for three, four years now, and we've done it at specific schools.
We've had to do the school improvement plans for three, four years now. And we've done it at specific schools. And so, this is a little bit of a new approach of having it district-wide and then having it cross the entire district with all the schools, as well as still address the schools that have special need, you know what I mean? The needs that we've been working on over the past three years. Is that how we're looking at it?
Actually, you approved the district-wide improvement plan last year. And so, this is not that new. It's just that what threw us, as Michelle explained, we didn't think the state was going to require a district school improvement plan again. They seem to be abandoning those under the Rising Star process, if you remember right, that we went through that. And so, the difficulty here was putting that together in February for this pretty strict deadline. They just didn't, we were surprised that we got that. But, a lot of people who served in the past, served on the current committee, and they were generous enough to come forward and work with us to continue to make changes in that district school improvement plan that met the new issues that arose because of ELL, but at the same time, develop that school improvement plan. So, we still have, and actually, all of the buildings submit a school district improvement plan, whether or not they're required or not by the state. It's, the district requires that of building principals and their staffs to develop that. And then, what we try to do is then, we'll take this plan and align it going into next year with the building improvement plans so that we're aligning district-wide with the schools so that we're aligning those improvements across the district and in the buildings. So, this is kind of the starting point for moving it to the building levels. And some of that will be done by staffs over the summer.
So, first, first of all, let me just say, thank you. Clearly, this was a huge effort on everybody's part, and we appreciate it. Second of all, you've clearly done an absolutely thorough job because this is the fewest questions from the Board of Education that I've experienced in years. So, thank you for all of your efforts.
Moving now, the next part is the mobile learning implementation plan. Did I get that right?
Yes.
I did. So, we, it's changed a little bit. So, presenting this evening is the curriculum department, learning and teaching department, along with technology have combined to put a plan together to present to you, to the Board of Education tonight. We're not asking for any kind of action tonight on this plan, but Michelle and her staff members want to present this, along with staff, on a vision going into the future on the mobile learning implementation program for District 205. So, with that, I will turn this over to Michelle.
Thank you. Yes, we are very excited at the true collaboration. This is my first time ever working on a tech plan with the technology department and the curriculum, the learning and teaching department. So, and thank goodness, I can just say, for Google Docs because we were all working on the same document at the same time, numerous people, and it was very nice to have that collaboration. But, in addition to learning and teaching and the district, and the technology, there were many, many staff members involved in this. And you'll, you'll see their names. And many of them are here tonight, and we'll recognize them in a second. But, just so you know, the, the presentation, I see you have copies of, will mirror the executive summary that you saw in, in the board documents. So, we didn't give you the presentation, but it will, it mirrors exactly the executive summary. So, if you need to go back to the executive summary, you certainly could. And a phrase that I want to put out there right now is something called future-ready classrooms. And we're going to really be trying to use that terminology instead of a one-to-one environment, or a learning environment, or a 21st century. You know, we are 15 years into the 21st century. So, but a future-ready classroom, I just want to define this from you, for you, comes from the Department of Education. And how they define it is upgrading, some examples are upgrading high-speed internet connectivity, providing access to educational devices and digital content, and preparing teachers to use technology effectively to improve student learning and their own professional development. And I think that really sums up what the mobile learning implementation is really all about. And it really shows the connectedness of learning and teaching with technology for our staff and students. Next slide. Thank you. So, this evening is, as Mr. Purno said, it's about discussion. So, we have a lot of topics for, that we will be hitting through our presentation tonight. I'm not going to read that to you, and it was in the executive summary. There are two items on there that it would be, that we need to be thinking about a little quicker, and those would be staffing of the Point Six ITC at York and teacher professional learning. We are down, we would like to offer some professional learning to some staff members before the end of the school year. And we would like to start thinking through that and planning that because teachers use the summer to professionally develop. And if they leave here in May or June, thinking about MLI, it will give them the focus of what, what they would want to think about this summer. We will offer more classes during the summer, and you'll see that through our professional learning plan. But, I think it's really important to think that we, we let the teachers leave the, the school year knowing if we're heading in that direction. So, next. Thank you. Okay, try reading all these names. And this was hard, we tried to put it on table and it did not look good. Look at all the people that have participated in this collaboration. And if you think about the groups on the far right, K-5 content specialists, K-5 grade level teams, that's dozens, hundreds more staff members have all been a part. The names that are listed are from our Curriculum Technology Committee, and they represent all grade levels and building and district leadership. And I would like to ask if any of them are in the audience today to stand, to be recognized for their work. There's a couple that didn't stand. I'm going to call them out. No, I'm kidding. And at this point, I am going to turn it over to Kathy Baker.
Okay, well, welcome to our journey. I'm going to go over how it started in 2012 at York High School. We decided we wanted to increase access for our students at the high school. And after looking at a number of devices, we narrowed it down to Chromebooks and iPads. And we also wanted to consider Bring Your Own Device, which is BYOD. So, we had some classes volunteer to have their students use the device 24/7 with Chromebooks. Other classes used iPads, and two of our pilot classes did a BYOD where the students were able to bring a device from home. And we were lucky to have one class that used Chromebooks, and then for the next quarter, they used iPads. So, we were able to get data back from those students for both of the devices. This is one of the first Chromebooks that entered our district. This, the, started the feedback. We were able to collect a lot of feedback from teachers, students, and parents. And we did that on a regular basis throughout the school year. And Chromebooks quickly emerged as the preferred device. It was their quick boot-up time, typically eight to 12 seconds. The fact that they are cloud-based using Google really meant a lot because now the students could access documents here, they could access them at home, and the long battery life. We also liked the ease of management and the low cost of these devices. And with the start of more devices getting into the hands of our students, that's where the CTC was developed, as Michelle referred to. The CTC was comprised of teachers volunteering their time to assist in moving the district forward. So, they came on a purely volunteer basis, and we really appreciated that time. In year two, this is the fall of 2013, we found that the Chromebooks, again, were the preferred device. So, we had middle school teachers join in on the pilot. We had teachers apply from Churchville, Sandberg, and Bryan to be part of the middle school MLI pilot. Chromebook cards were brought to each of the middle school, and they were rotated each quarter. Sometimes they were shared between two teachers, so they had to figure out when those cards were available for the students. Building administrators, by the way, were a very integral part of coordinating all of this. And the middle school pilot went very well, except for one flaw. Many of our teachers who started using the Chromebooks for learning wanted the cards all of the time. They didn't want to share. So, we were really happy that from day one, as soon as the students opened those Chromebooks, learning began. At York, we decided to bring Chromebooks to York as well. And we took the Chromebooks that were before one-to-one that stayed with the students and put them into cards. And the reason was, this gave specific selected departments, the teachers, it had the ability to have that mobile environment all day long instead of the kids moving in and out of the class. So, that gave them a much deeper sense of what a digital environment can look like and can become when you're talking about student learning. Now, we're in about this time last year. We came to the board and we asked for some instructional tech coaches. We knew that the mobile environment was going to move forward, and we needed to make just-in-time support and professional learning available to our staff if it were to be successful. And so, thanks to the board's support, we did hire 4.4 FTE instructional tech coaches. This was the true turning point of our mobile learning initiative. As we entered the summer, we began to arrange for professional development, professional learning opportunities for our staff. It was a variety of courses, but one of the courses that we offered included becoming a certified Google educator. This course was face-to-face with the participants, but most of the time was completed online with online studying, as well as five exams that had to be passed provided by Google. So, 23 of our teachers now, some went through that course, some came in, or some did it on their own. But we do have 23 Google Apps certified educators that are helping to make this movement in their buildings. And we really appreciate that effort. And a special congratulations to Katie Diebold, our York ITC, who went on to complete a very rigorous application process to become a certified Google education trainer. And kudos to Katie. The District 205 Instructional Tech Coaches became a reality in year three of our pilot. So, that's this fall. Thanks to the support of the board members, we were able to make 4.4 ITCs available to our staff. And I'd like them to stand now. It's Ben Hartman, who's at Churchville. Michael Johnson is our ITC at Bryan. Liz Marcellus is over at Sandberg. And Katie Diebold and Jill Heaton are our York ITCs. And I think we need to give them a round of applause. From day one, the ITCs began to connect with our staff. And I mean literally from day one. We hired them this year, and on Institute Day, they were all presenting, not only to their buildings, but also to our elementary buildings. We moved them all to middle school, and then we brought them all over to the high school. And so, we really were able to use their skills from the very beginning. The days last, these days, these Institute Days and the connections they had with their staff immediately began to cultivate a culture of change. And change happens through the presence of relationships and trust. And by building that trust and providing support to our teachers, we are seeing more teachers willing to take risks and try new things because they know their ITC will be there to support them. Lessons truly started to evolve. Last month, we decided to survey the certified staff in grade six to 12, asking the question, are you in favor of students having one-to-one access? And this, these are the results. So, overall, the return of a yes was 93.2% by the 310 teachers who took the survey. Individually, at the high school, it was up to 95.1%. And at the middle schools, it was 91%. So, we were, we were really happy that our, our staff is ready to move forward for our student learning. As we move forward, we met with various groups across the district to use the future-ready resources that Michelle referred to to build a future-ready conceptual framework for our district. Again, Katie Diebold, our York ITC, used her graphic background to create our logo, our MLI at 205 conceptual framework logo that you see here. And you can see what we believe in. We believe future-ready students have the capacity to act independently, the power and ability to think critically, and need the opportunity to create, collaborate, and communicate with others. It's all about learning and connecting. We also talk about agency. When we use the word agency, we are referring to empowering students to take ownership of their own learning. Agility refers to the need to respond to and embrace a digital world that is moving faster than ever. And access is what we're talking about today, helping our learners to access information when and where they need it. And so, this is our conceptual framework that, again, goes back to future-ready schools. It talks about access to information when it is needed, students communicating, collaborating, and creating rich, authentic work. It's not just a one-to-one environment, it's more, it is talking about having, it's more than having kids just with computers. Our focus is on learning, anytime, anywhere learning. And that's why we refer to it as the mobile learning implementation. It will drive our vision for digital learning for years to come. Take a moment and think back to your grade six classroom. And it might have looked something like this, it might have looked a little bit different. But the classroom, the point is that I'm going to take you into our buildings because our classrooms are really changing now. Don't miss the fellow in the corner there, I just love that dramatic pose. This is a science class over at Sandberg, and they are reviewing for a science test. And I don't know about you, but they really look like they're much more engaged than I was when I was reviewing for a science test in grade six. These are Bryan PE students creating an exercise video that they'll be able to refer back to and also share their learning with others. Student-centered learning no longer is tethered to a desktop or an electrical outlet. These Bryan students are able to form groups where and how the learning best suits their needs. So, our classrooms are definitely changing, transforming how our students learn. And this is what the mobile learning classrooms are all about. This happens to be a classroom at Churchville. Group work can be completed at school or at home virtually with Google Apps. We've had reports of some students doing it on their phone when they're not in either of those locations. We need to offer our students the ability to connect and interact outside of our school walls. Online portfolios are being created, and you may hear more about those when our teachers get up to talk, in Google Sites. This is a student creating a podcast. They're using a program called Audacity. And so, the project was called Audacious Shakespeare because they are creating podcasts to demonstrate learning of Macbeth, which, that's putting old and a new learning together. And this is York, a York class participating in the Hour of Code. During the week of December 8th through 14th, it was designated as the Hour of Code for students to be introduced to the many problem-solving skills, logic and creativity that is a part of computer science. And we had classes in elementary buildings all the way up to York participating. Now, we are going to hear the most powerful piece, and this is the voices from our classrooms. We're going to start with Effie Nasas from Bryan Middle School. Thank you, Effie.
All right, hello again. I just want to talk to you a little bit about last year, what my experience was with Chromebooks versus this year, and what has changed in the short span of one year. So, last year, I was given the opportunity to have the Chromebooks all year in the classroom. I nagged enough, I think, to be able to get them because once you get your hands on them, you really realize the power that lies within them with the teaching and learning that can happen. This year, the biggest change as far as logistics is the sharing. And I think a true testament to see how much teachers are using them is just to look at the calendars of how much the Chromebooks are checked out. It's a huge jigsaw puzzle because teachers are really using them and students are, it's becoming a norm. So, really, when we look at the Chromebooks in the classroom, I think the phrase that really captures it, it's the norm. It's the norm. It's the norm of our routines, it's the norm of communication, it's the norm of collaboration. So what that means is, so our routines, kids come in, they know what the expectations are for the usage of the Chromebooks, they get their assigned number right away, they look at the warm-up on the board, and they get started with whatever they need to do. They're aware of the terminology that's used, what they need to be doing with the documents, where to find them, where to access them. Also, it's become the norm, is you don't lose your materials as much because they're always there. For middle school students, the excuses don't change, they just become more creative. So you can access even things like when they were last revised. But what's really great is the communication piece. This year, more than ever, I have seen students advocating for themselves. I'm not getting emails all the time from parents telling me, so-and-so, my child forgot this, or doesn't know this, what should they do? Instead, it's the student themselves that's emailing me, asking me questions, or to clarify something, or if something wasn't done, they let me know. And I think that's pretty amazing. It shows incredible responsibility. And really, I tell them, if you are on top of things like that, it really, it's, it's pretty mature and responsible as we're moving forward. So with communication, also with parents, what's really great is they have access through their child of everything we're doing in the classroom. So there's transparency. Just look in your child's drive. If you're not sure about something, look at what we're doing in class, have access to it. Parents, a lot of times at conferences were, well, what if we don't know? It doesn't matter, your child knows. Or they know how to communicate with me and work out the kinks, which is really great. Also, communication with each other, with the students, which then leads me to collaboration. So the way that students work together beyond just the teacher in front of the classroom and, okay, get in your groups or whatever, they have their own communities within the documents that are shared and how they work together with one another. And their engagement is incredibly powerful, because it's not one child on one sheet of paper, or it's everyone collaborating on the same, same documents, which is pretty amazing. So those are some of the things that I've really experienced within the year. Really, it's also become the norm for changing instruction to make it more dynamic, more engaging for students, and therefore to increase the learning that's happening. A lot of goal-setting is done, all their documents are there, they can refer to them at any time, they see their growth through their portfolios and things like that. And it's been an incredibly amazing experience. And I'll be the first to say that I don't think technology replaces solid instruction, but it enhances it. And that's really what's been happening. We see this enhancement of what we're required to do as teachers, but then the learning makes it all worth it. That's really what's happening. I know I've been really ambiguous and vague in what I'm saying, but if I were to sit here and show you all the student work and everything we've done, we'd be here for hours. So I do encourage you to come into our classrooms, but more than that, talk to the kids. I mean, there is nothing more honest than a middle school student to tell you what they think about what you're doing. So really, it's more about even their perspective of what's happening. So it's really exciting to be a part of all of this, and I do thank you for the opportunity to hearing our voices tonight. So that's pretty much it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear from Charlotte Kula from Churchville School.
Good evening. Last year, I came in front of the board and was sharing with you my insight as a veteran teacher, and how, for the first time, I really, truly believed that computers were changing education. This year, I'm coming with two years of experience now in Google platform and computers on a more regular basis, although we'd still love even more, is the fact that it's not just changing education, it is, and computers are an integral part of our classroom. And I'm going to share with you some specific instruction, because I want you to hear what's happening in teaching and learning that I hadn't seen to this degree before. Last year, I was saying how exciting Google was, because kids could comment and help each other grow. And I also could comment and help them grow more individually. But this year, what we're doing is, because kids are so used to, as Effie has said, the routines of computers, we're uploading through Happara to student folders, a sample of student work that's good, but we want to make it really good. And so, what we ask students to do is zoom in on a particular part of an essay, for instance, and individually, students are looking at that essay part and revising, but it doesn't stop there. Then, they volunteer for me to open up their files, so someone can see exactly how they chose to revise. Other students are seeing the wording, comparing it with their own. We're talking, and all of a sudden, you start to sense this real shift. It's not Mrs. Kula telling you how to revise, it's the students learning from each other how to revise. And it's becoming almost the norm that we're a community of learners and teachers. Here's another example. Grammar can be a pretty, you know, rote thing. With computers, it's going beyond the rote. We're taking an example perhaps that I give them in a skill. We're individually practicing through, this is a new pilot that we just started in terms of, we were in a trial, not a pilot, it's a trial membership in iXL for language arts. Okay, so they're individually practicing that particular skill on a very rote basis. But then, again, I ask them, open up your folder, your English folder, take out the student sample, now let's look at this paragraph, and where do you see areas for editing? And students then are starting to apply that very rote skill in a real application. And again, we start learning from each other, because some people will pick up more ideas than others. And by sharing, kids are really expanding the classroom's instruction from just Mrs. Kula to student to student to student. So then, okay, this might all happen in the same two-period class, where we're focusing on writing and revision, and then I'll say to the students, okay, so go back to your folder, and I put in there a template, a presentation template, now what I want you to do is to open it up, claim a slide, and everyone else be respectful of the fact that you're not going into someone else's territory, and put into that slide two of your 10 analogies that you created for today. And all of a sudden, then, that presentation becomes an activity where we are solving other students' problems. And we're talking about their use of the vocabulary, the logic that they're setting up in the analogy. Again, it's not Mrs. Kula sitting down and creating all the analogies, although I create enough of them for practice, but it's students contributing to the learning and the activities that each will be learning from. But it doesn't stop with writing. So many times, I've gotten, when I've talked about technology, I have focused on the writing, because it's a powerful, powerful subject for computer use. But with the help of Ben Hartman, our instructional tech coach, who has been a real partner with me in the classroom, and who kind of compare to a parent who's helping a child ride a bike for the first time. He's there for me to feel comfortable trying something new and realizing that, hmm, if I wobble a little bit, he's there to catch me and to problem-solve with me. Well, we, we were talking about how, when kids are discussing books, I don't know what every group is talking about. And sometimes, groups look perfectly functional and productive, but I really don't know the content of what's going on. Well, we talked about a program called Screencastify, and Ben, in his creativity, came up with the idea of using a turntable. And so, what we did was a lazy Susan. We put a computer on it, brought up Screencastify, put it in the middle of a group, and we explained to students how to use it, so that each time someone's talking, they're turning the computer to the person who's talking, the program's recording not only the voice, but also a video, which is minimized, so it doesn't distract the students. When they're done, I've got 10 minutes of genuine discussion recorded of the students, which doesn't just stop with me looking at it. We can take a student, a group's work and project it, and now we've got a focus for discussion about what is working well, and where do we still need to strengthen our participation in our discussions. But it doesn't stop there either. This is the cool part. We've got video that I can then Gmail to students who perhaps are absent, and they would benefit from listening to a discussion. Or we just change up the purpose for the Screencastify. For instance, they were doing some summarizing work, and we jigsawed some nonfiction, so that not everybody had to read the exact same chapters. And groups chose to jigsaw that and record it in Screencastify. We had video, emailed all students, the three email, the three videos of the chapters, asked them to listen to them and take notes as homework, and we came back the next day. The entire class had three chapters' worth of information that we could discuss and move forward with. And where it really then starts to expand is when the students started to request on their own to use the application, to rehearse independently their speeches that they were making in class, or to record some information that they were arguing regarding Julius Caesar. In short, what I'm really trying to say here and illustrate is that computers aren't fluff, and that they are the way we're doing business, and we want to do that every period, every day. And as Effie said, there's nothing more frustrating than to go into the calendar and realize, lo and behold, can you imagine this? Science, math, music, rural language, health, social studies, they all want computers, and they're checked out. So I can have the best-laid plans for the week, but if there's no computer, then there's lack of the continuity. But we make do, because that's what education's about, we're flexible. But I have to tell you this story, and this is going to be my conclusion. We, at one time, we didn't have computers, and we wanted to do a review, and, and I wanted to be able to informally assess the students' understanding. So I said, okay, kids, we don't have computers today, so how about if you just pull out the whiteboards that are in the cabinet? And we did the old, you know, write down the answer and hold it up for Mrs. Kula to see. And Mr. Hartman walked in that day, and it was so funny and yet poignant. One of the students said, hey, Mr. Hartman, this is old-fashioned cahoot. Ouch. You know, the last thing I would want someone to describe in my class is old-fashioned. But it does, really does go to the point that computers are so essential in our classrooms today. And I want you to know, it isn't just for fun and games, and it isn't just for engagement, it's because it's creating a different kind of instruction, where the learners are learning from each other as well as from me. And that is the most important change that definitely is taking place because of computers. Thank you.
And I was lucky to see the lazy Susan, so they've got the camera in the front of the computer, and you could move it around, and we forgot to put that into our tech plan to get some lazy, no, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. But that is, it was a wonderful, yeah, in his budget. Our next speaker is from Sandberg School, and it is Liz Marcellus.
I'm Elizabeth Marcellus, and I'm from Sandberg. I'm actually in my eighth year teaching there. I taught math for seven years, but am in my first year as an instructional technology coach. So I just kind of wanted to reflect on the difference of, before I used to see laptops get checked out every once in a while, mainly by English teachers to write papers. But now, Chromebooks are consistently used throughout multiple, or throughout all, I should say, subject areas and for various reasons. And I want to touch base on some of the ways that they're used in the classrooms. The Chromebooks are used to collaborate, and this collaboration happens between students, between students and teachers, and even from teacher to teacher. It occurs in multiple, for multiple reasons, such as writing papers, creating presentations, students working on assignments, and even assessments. The Chromebooks provide an authentic audience for students. Students-only audience is no longer just the teacher. I think Charlotte just pointed out, you know, how she would put students' revisions up on the board after they went through an essay. Blogging is another great example of that. Students' posts are seen by other students, their teachers, and even other classes that are involved in the blog. The Chromebooks are used to provide constant and immediate feedback to the students. They expand the four walls of the classroom. For example, students can explore, they can go on virtual tours and explore museums and historical sites that they wouldn't have access to otherwise. They provide an opportunity for student-driven learning. They give students flexibility in the way they, excuse me, in the way they want to learn. They help provide the opportunity for anytime, anywhere learning. So with Google Apps and access to the Chromebooks at school, the work is done in the cloud, and it can be accessed anywhere. So Chromebooks have provided the chance for a shift in learning for students and teachers. They've opened doors to various educational opportunities, and I can't wait to see how these doors will continue to open when students have a more consistent access to them. Thank you.
And next, we're going to hear from the York team, which is Beth Liedoff, Jill Heaton, Katie Diebold, and Wendy Albert.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Beth Liedoff, and I'm a Spanish teacher at York. I've been in the district for 25 years, and I've always been very passionate about technology. So I'm here with you tonight to share with you a little bit about how one-to-one computing has benefited my teaching and my students, as well as the course teams that I participate with in the rural language department. This fall, as you know, the Spanish II and IIH courses had classroom sets of Chromebook cards arrive, and we use them each and every day. Many of us also took advantage of those Chromebook cards in our classroom and kind of integrated them into the other courses that we teach as well. I would safely estimate that over 500 of the 2,000 students taking language at York had their curricula infused with lots of technology this fall. With the addition of the Chromebooks, students were really able to build their proficiency skills in reading, writing, speaking, and listening in the target language through connecting to those authentic sources, resources online, and they were able to gain a deeper appreciation of the numerous cultures of the Spanish language. In our collaborative teams of II and IIH, we six teachers worked and supported each other to redesign and create differentiated activities that effortlessly connected students to authentic songs, readings, audio news clips, and other online resources. We also designed projects that allowed our students to be creative and collaborate through the Chromebook and the Google environment. And finally, we designed authentic, additional authentic proficiency assessments that better align with our departmental goals for our students. So as, as I said before, we had these Chromebook cards come into our classrooms, and it was sitting back there, and it was just natural that I was going to pick it up and apply it to my two classes of AP students that I teach. So here too, these students were able to connect to authentic culture, and this was really especially beneficial, since all the AP students have a speaking assessment called Cultural Connections on the AP exam, where they must show the ability to talk about their own culture and compare it with another one in the Spanish-speaking world. So the, the more exposure I was able to give them, the better. Also, we know that District 205 and the Common Core do stress the importance of student reflection and feedback for growth and learning. With the use of the Chromebooks in class, I was able to have my students deepen their writing and reflection skills through the creation and use of student blogs and student e-portfolios. The blogs allowed my AP students to write about and promptly follow up an activity with some reflection on their progress, such as celebrating what went right, creating a plan to move forward, kind of thinking about what did not go so right, et cetera. And it allowed them to voice their opinions, or be creative with blog prompts centered on those AP themes being studied. With the student e-portfolio- With the student e-portfolios that I created, students curated and reflected on speaking and writing samples as well as assessments, which allowed them to see their progress and growth over time. This e-portfolio gave my students another place to re-listen, reread, and reflect on their AP-style assessments. We were able to do this because of the Chromebooks in class and I hope to return to these worthwhile additional components of the class with even more Chromebooks in the fall. But January came. In January, with the loss of the Chromebook carts, I was one of those teachers that did not really want to give up the Chromebook cart. I really wanted just to hide it in a back room and not move it up to the third floor in English. So those 500 language students really experienced a severe drop in access to the Chromebooks, going from about three to four days a week, considering you're taking into time for assessments and your teacher, you know, teaching those concepts, to now one opportunity every seven class days. I pride myself in being a very forward-thinking teacher, along with other teachers in this wonderful district. And this absence prevented us from better preparing our students for success in our multicultural society. Our loss of that consistent technology for every student, every day, limits the opportunities for students to explore culture, reflect on their work, and to complete creative projects enhanced with technology. It is my hope, and I'm sure the hope of other teachers in our building, that all students have Chromebooks so that everyone can continue with great collaborative, creative, and reflective opportunities to grow in their learning. Having one-to-one technology in the district supports us teachers as we work to implement new ideas and the successful teaching approaches all year long with our students in the district. If we recognize that students today are learning in new and different ways than a few years ago, then we should be providing our students with the tools they need to be successful and to continue moving forward in their learning anytime, anywhere, and grow in the skills needed for success in this interconnected world. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
My name is Jill Heaton and I have taught here in Elmhurst for the last seven years. I've taught chemistry for the last seven years and this year I've also had the opportunity to be part of the amazing instructional technology coaching team. I honestly have loved Elmhurst from the first day I set foot in York for my interview. And I believe that the education that we offer to our students here is stellar. And I really, truly believe that we are on the edge of something really big and exciting in education here in Elmhurst. There is this hunger among our teachers and among our students to access the power of technology to transform the teaching and learning that's happening in our classrooms. I want to share a little bit about my own journey. Seven years ago, when I started in Elmhurst, I was so excited that there were seven desktop computers in my classroom. That was pretty cutting-edge for the time. And over the last seven years, I've seen a lot of changes. The overhead projectors have finally left, they've been replaced by smart boards, they've been replaced by ceiling-mounted projectors, document cameras. All of these things have made my job as a teacher much easier and helped me deliver instruction much more fluidly. However, it wasn't until 2012, when I got to participate in the iPad pilot, that I had an aha moment and I realized, technology isn't just about making it easier for me to give instruction. In fact, the technology needs to transform the teaching and learning that's happening in our classrooms. Because if my students can Google, what is the molar mass of barium hydroxide? And two seconds later, they have the answer, why do I spend three days having them do practice worksheets on this? Now, that's an important chemistry topic. I still teach that. I still have my students practice it. But really, the focus of my classroom has shifted to be, well, do they understand why that's the molar mass? Do they understand what the units grams per mole actually mean? And what can they do with that knowledge now? By having access to the technology, I realized that the focus was no longer on me or the technology. Instead, it was on what students knew and were able to do. One example of this is the nuclear chemistry project that I do with my students. I used to have them do research about how nuclear power plants work. I would get a lot of Wikipedia copy and paste. They'd make a poster, we'd hang it on the wall. It was great. But with the technology, I was able to have students take on a persona. Maybe they were a congressman, maybe they were a concerned citizen, maybe they were a scientist, maybe they were someone working at the power plant. And they could compose blog posts with cutting-edge research that they found online from that perspective and then comment on each other's posts as if they were their character. So really, they were taking the scientific knowledge that they gained and applying it in a new and powerful way. This process of reflecting on and revising the teaching and learning in my classroom has been really powerful and transformative for the education that my students receive. But I'm going to be honest, it's not been an easy journey. And I'm a pretty techie teacher and I think about the teachers that aren't as naturally drawn to the technology as I am. That's a scary journey to embark on alone, which is exactly why it was the right decision to bring an instructional technology coaches this year. I want to give you a snapshot of what's been happening at York. This year, as part of our pilot program, we had eight Chromebook carts. And as Beth mentioned, those Chromebook carts were given to course teams of teachers for a semester at a time. What we've seen is that this is a really powerful thing because these teachers were not, they didn't apply for this, they didn't opt into this, they were just gifted with the Chromebooks. And it's kind of like a kid who's gifted with socks for Christmas. Some kids get really excited about that. Some of our teachers were really excited, they knew exactly how they were going to use the Chromebooks right away. Other teachers were a little bit more hesitant, for good reasons. They were worried about how this would change classroom management in their classroom. What additional distractions would this bring? And how are they going to find time to learn how to use the Chromebooks and revise lessons and do all the other things they have to do as professional educators? So we set a minimum expectation. We said, use the Chromebooks at least three times during the semester that you have them. And I'm excited to report that our teachers have far exceeded that. At a minimum, we have some teachers that have used them about 14 times this semester. That's an average of more than once a week. At the high end, we have teachers that are using them every single day. And most teachers are actually right in between, about three times a week. And they are doing really powerful things with that. The reason they don't use them more is actually particular to the carts. It takes about three to five minutes at the beginning of class to get their Chromebooks out, three to five minutes at the end to get them put back so that they can wheel the cart down the hall for the next class. And that's like 10 to 20% of your class time as a teacher. So it needs to be a really valuable reason to get the Chromebooks out. And they also are starting to realize, oh my goodness, this is what the Chromebooks can do, this is what I can do with them. And they need time to transform the lessons now that they've caught the vision for it. I want to share, I'm probably already like past my five-minute limit, but I want to share like one little example that I've seen of how this shift is happening in our teachers. Breann Kennedy Brooks is an English teacher at York. She teaches in the Cohort English Program. And she is one of those teachers that will fight for what her students need. She knows what they need, she will fight to make sure they get it. But she's also one of the teachers that would describe herself as a little hesitant at the beginning because she wasn't really sure how to use it. She describes herself as a senior citizen when it comes to technology, even though she's young, which is not true at all. I have seen her grow by leaps and bounds this semester. The biggest thing that she says is that using the Chromebooks helps her students stay organized, as mentioned earlier. The Cohort freshmen struggle so much with so many things and organization is just one barrier that if you can remove it, the focus shifts onto the learning rather than the academic skills of staying organized. Additionally, she's able to use this, as mentioned previously, in a metacognitive way to help students reflect on their learning. So as students write an essay, she can go in and put comments. Then as they revise that essay, they can go into suggested editing mode where those changes show up in a different color. She can see what they've written. And then here's the key part, they also have to comment on each change that they made and explain why. And so this whole process is difficult to do on paper, but she's able to watch them do this in class or watch them do it while they're doing it at home and she can comment back and forth with them. And they have this real-time discussion about their work, even though they're not sitting side by side. And she has completely bought in. And I think the key to this kind of transformation for our hesitant teachers is the constant access. By knowing that those carts are going to be in their classroom day after day, they're not afraid to try something new because they know if they struggle today, they can go back and revisit it tomorrow. They also are, maybe not the teachers that are going to be first to jump on and book a computer lab or book the Chromebook cart. And by having it in their room, they'll say, oh, maybe I'll try that today. So that constant access is really, really important. And all of our pilot teachers report that they can't imagine teaching without the Chromebooks now. As Beth mentioned, it's a major loss when you take the Chromebooks away from teachers. And even after having full access, even once a week is not enough to transform the learning that teachers are ready to do. I want you to imagine what this would look like if we scaled this up across York. What would a student's day look like if they had 24/7 access both in school and out of school to this technology? What could we be asking them to do? Unfortunately, only 10% of our teachers have this constant daily guaranteed access to Chromebooks or technology. And the other teachers, that 90%, is seeing what's happening in this 10% and feeling a little bit left out. They're saying, why don't I have that kind of access? And so they're begging those teachers, can we borrow your Chromebooks anytime you're not using it? And they too are getting on board and they are ready to make this transformation. I can speak to the science department because I know those people, I've known them for a long time. I know that there's teachers there who are willing to give up the desktop computers in their room. They're willing to trade in their physical textbooks for cheaper or free online digital resources. And some of them would probably sell their right arm if it meant their students would have this kind of access next year. I can't tell you how many times I've been stopped in the hall this year and asked, when are we going one-to-one? When are we going to know what's happening next year? If I had a dollar for every time that happened, I could probably buy a Chromebook for every freshman. And that might be my backup plan if this doesn't go over well tonight. So I really just want to say, we need to move now. The momentum is there. That 93% number that you saw, we are like on this upward trend. We would not have been anywhere close to that last year. And I'm a little afraid to ask, what do you think's going to happen if we delay any longer? There's not much more room to go up. Are we going to level off? Are we going to see a decline? If we don't move now, we're missing an opportunity to transform the learning happening in our classrooms. And the longer we wait to make that decision this year, the harder it's going to be to have our teachers and our students prepared for that on day one next year. So I think the time is right. So thank you for your time.
My name is Katie Diebold. This is my first year in the district and my first year as an ITC at York. I came to the district from Lydon where I was nine years as a business and industrial technology teacher. I was a member of the district Chromebook committee. So we were the committee that kind of built the initiative from the ground up. We started the piloting phases, we wrote acceptable use policies, we did all of those various aspects of building an initiative. And just being part of that experience at Lydon was an amazing transformation. When I left, they were on year three. And so I am so, so, so excited to be part of this in this district. When I walked into York, in my interview and on the first day, it felt like home. The way that the teachers responded to everything just made me feel like this was the place that I wanted to be. Right out of the gate, working with these teachers, they treated me like I was one of their own, not a newcomer. I mean, we passed, when we were working together, we passed the, hi, my name's Katie conversation. It was, hey, I need your help. Like, how can we make this work in my classroom? We skipped all of the friendly stuff and I was one of their own. And that's something that I truly, truly appreciate about this district. Every day, I have teachers, you know, coming, looking for guidance as they were navigating the Google, you know, as everybody called it. And there's some anxiety that comes with that, with something new. And over the past, you know, nine months, I've seen that excitement, that anxiety turn into excitement for the way that they can truly transform the way that their students are learning. A couple of weeks ago, Jill and I had the opportunity to visit each of the departments. And so our hope was to go to them and kind of say, hey, here's where we're at with the mobile learning initiative. And we also wanted some feedback from those teachers as to where they were. Are you ready for this? You know, this is a big jump. How do you feel about this? I remember with Jill, we were leaving each of those meetings, talking about how each one went. And I'm walking back to my office, so excited like Christmas when you're going to open the results to the survey. And in my mind, I'm like, okay, you know, this is going to be maybe around 70%. It would be great if we could get, you know, 70%. I think that would say something strong. And I opened up my computer and low and behold was 95% of the York teachers saying, I support this, let's do it. That is like Christmas morning to me and that is just an overwhelming display. This is something new that we're asking them to do. If you think about what we ask our teachers to do, they have a plate full of para and evaluation and all of these different moving pieces. We're asking them to take on something new. And I think that's a huge testament to the teachers that you hired. 95% of them, only 14 out of almost 200 teachers at York are saying, I'm ready, I can do this. I think that is something that is just so powerful and a testament to the staff that we have. Let's move on to the kids. Our kids are ready for this digital learning and many of them need it. A couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to speak with our recent York graduate. She's an attendee of the University of Illinois. And I was asking her how she felt, you know, leaving York, did you feel like you were prepared for college? And she said she felt absolutely prepared in every single way possible except for technology. The way that they were learning in her, in the digital learning environment, these learning management systems, she didn't quite feel as prepared as she could. And so I think as each year passes, our graduating seniors are missing out on that opportunity to experience a one-to-one learning environment and everything that that affords. For personal use, our students are ninjas with that device. They know how to get their information, they know how to communicate, they know how to do everything in the quickest way, even better than any of us know how to do it. Imagine if they could take that personal set of skills and bring that into the classroom and shape their educational experience in the way that they do personally. I feel like it's our responsibility to help our students learn how to harness these skills and bring them into the classroom. And we have to find a way to make this happen for them. So with all of that being said, we have a plan at York. We're ready to roll this out tomorrow. Literally, ready to roll it out tomorrow. We've been talking about it all week. As an ITC, I've had the opportunity to talk with our staff, what are your future needs? What are your immediate needs? If we go one-to-one next year, what do you need to be ready to go on day one in August? And so we've kind of outlined their needs into several different categories. First, they said that they need to know what a workflow looks like in a one-to-one environment. That workflow from a traditional classroom without computers to each student having a computer is very, very different. And it's going to look very different in every classroom. So our first responsibility on that list, before the end of the year, we want to show these teachers three different options of what a workflow looks like in a classroom. How do you present the students with content? How do you collect it? How do you assess it? Like, what does that workflow look like? And so we'd like to present them with some options and then have them choose a track to be trained on. So we have those tracks set, ready to go, we just are ready to present those to our students. Another area of need is in Google Apps for Education. Some of them would like some continuing support to build a foundational knowledge. And we'd like to offer a class this summer that will kind of build that foundational knowledge for those teachers that are at that level. We also have some teachers that are ready to take it up a notch and ready to move to some advanced tracks. So we'd like to have that option available to our teachers as well and we have plans for those courses. Additionally, this summer, we'd like to help support our teachers in ways that they can modify and redefine their classroom in terms of designing learning experiences. We refer to this as the SAMR model in the techie area. So that's some additional training we'd like to provide for our teachers. The last area of need that we've noticed is in practical applications. This kind of loops in with workflow a little bit. During Fall Institute, we plan to have some scenarios, day-to-day issues that arise when you're in a learning environment, and working collaboratively to sort through some of those issues, including classroom management, digital citizenship, and other various areas that our teachers have identified. In short, we're prepared to implement this plan. We are ready at York. We are so ready for this. We're just waiting for the go-ahead from you all. Literally, if you told us, go ahead and start getting your teachers ready tomorrow morning, Jill and I would sit down and we would put this plan in motion. And really, we truly appreciate all of the support that you have given us and we look forward to all of the great things we can do for our kids with your continued support. So thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Albert and I am the Chair for the Division of Technology and Applied Arts, which includes the areas of business, family and consumer science, industrial technology, and building-wide instructional technology support as well. As the Division of Technology and Applied Arts, we are fairly fortunate across the departments to have more access to technology for learning and teaching than some of the departments at York. From the incorporation of technology to enhance projects and presentations to learning-specific applications such as computer-aided drafting and design, technology and applied arts students develop valuable technical skills that make them marketable as they pursue post-secondary education and careers. I've also been fortunate to see the changes that have taken place in a single department through the addition of a set of laptop carts. Providing one-to-one classroom access has given teachers the flexibility to stay in their classroom and lab space and seamlessly blend the use of physical and digital resources into their lessons. As teachers have started to see the possibilities for what could be done through technology, its use has truly grown exponentially. Today, students utilize technology as much as possible across not just our division but the building at York as well. Through my experiences working with the instructional technology coaches, preparing and planning for the new Technology Services Internship Course next year, which teachers and students and I am super excited about, as well as seeking out candidates, the best candidate for our computer science and computer programming courses. I've seen the tremendous opportunities we can bring to our students by strengthening the technology program at York. One of the most exciting projects that I've recently had the opportunity to observe and learn a little bit more about is the invitation to teach students in Sabrina Benjamin's class, working on developing electronic teaching portfolios. What used to be a collection of lesson plans and, you know, course materials in a binder that they could take, you know, off as they go to college, has been transformed truly into a powerful professional tool. Mrs. Diebold and Mrs. Benjamin. professional tool. Mrs. Diebold and Mrs. Benjamin sat down and kind of developed a vision for what this educational portfolio would look like. They planned all of the various aspects of the portfolio and not only co-planned but co-taught lessons to help the students understand the purpose for the portfolio, how to start developing the portfolio, how to build their portfolio sites, and what types of things to put in there and how to get, you know, your professional materials like your resume, your philosophy of education, evidence and reflection for each of the four teaching domains. In effect, the students are walking out of York not just with field-experienced teaching in classrooms, working with students, but they also have built a professional portfolio with evidence of teaching excellence and accomplishments in the field of education that they can take with them into the future. And did I mention they're only 18? As these students pursue post-secondary education coursework, student teach, and start their career, they'll be able to add to their portfolio, demonstrating a progression of skills, lesson reflection and refinement, and educational leadership over time. This is just one of the examples of the powerful learning opportunities provided through access to technology and instructional coaching support. As the Instructional Leader for Technology and Applied Arts, I've had the opportunity to see students use technology in many different classroom settings. I've seen students and teachers make extensive and imaginative use of technology as we ask them to do in our evaluation tool. This is done through engaging lessons planned by teachers and the creation of professional products utilizing information and skills students are developing in their classes. However, I also should probably address the fact that teachers and students do experience challenges with our current technology structure. I've had the, you know, unfortunate opportunities to see teachers struggle spending, you know, more of the class time than they would probably like, troubleshooting computer problems, printer problems, rather than supporting students in learning core-specific objectives. I've seen teachers spend, you know, most of their plan period trying to find computer lab space or trying to ensure that they had, you know, the laptop signed out on each of the specific days that they needed them. I've watched teachers bargain with one another as they try to piece together every available technology device that they can get their hands on. So, they don't totally have to throw out a lesson that they've developed in the past that's dependent on technology. I've also watched course teams diverge in different paths as one teacher was able to schedule lab space or get access to laptop carts. And another teacher, teaching the same course, the same lesson, the same units, was not able to get that technology. And I can't tell you the countless number of hours myself, my teachers, and my secretary have spent taking apart the laptop carts, putting them back together, reorganizing, making sure all the plugs fit in correctly, and all of the laptops are plugged in and charged so that they are ready the next time that teachers and students need them. In a one-to-one classroom, students would be bringing a charged Chromebook and be ready for the daily learning objectives within eight seconds of opening that Chromebook. When I reflect on some of the current challenges that we're facing with technology, having a Chromebook in the hands of students would kind of be this ultimate fantasy that we have right now. Imagine how much instructional time could be gained back because students would no longer have to wait as they powered up machines, logged into the laptops, and at the end of class, powered them down, made sure that they were plugged back in, and, you know, put in the cart correctly. Imagine how much more time teachers could spend in collaboration and on lesson improvement if they didn't have to worry about this piece of finding computer lab space and scheduling carts and scheduling the devices on the day that they need them. Imagine how much more instructional support our teachers could be providing to students within the lesson if you take away some of those frustrations that they're experiencing with our, our current devices. Imagine how level the playing field would be if every student had access to technology and every teacher could count on that technology being available whenever they needed it. And imagine how many more students would be creating projects and portfolios that stay with them well into their professional careers, much like our invitation to teach students are doing. Over 95% of teachers at York have indicated that they are in favor of having a device in the hands of each and every student next year. The work that our instructional technology coaches have done with teachers across the building and through the Chromebook pilots has been invaluable in shaping really this momentum for embracing technology and expanding that at York and in Elmhurst District 205. More so than ever, I've seen a true sense of urgency from teachers as they reflect on how they could use technology to truly transform their classes. Teachers are ready for the one-to-one fantasy to become a reality. Teachers, however, want to know that they'll be supported through coaching and targeted professional development. They also want to know that they have the support of the, at the administrative level as they take risks in trying some of these new technology approaches in their classrooms. Teachers need support and professional development. And as Katie has outlined, we have a plan that we are ready to put in place as soon as possible to ensure that our teachers are prepared for next year. Our teachers are eager to get started on establishing their digital classrooms, on expanding the use of technology in their lessons, and helping students truly build a set of skills that allows them to be successful as they pursue future education and employment opportunities. With your support, we are ready to truly transform the learning opportunities for students in Elmhurst.
Can we have another round of applause just for the whole group, just because I know it took a lot of time and effort for them to put together. Thank you very much. As you heard from the teachers at the front lines, it's all about learning. It's not about the tech stuff. It really changes the way students learn and activate in their classrooms. And so, we do have an implementation plan in place. You heard a little bit about it from York. And we are also looking to look at four basic frames. Supporting teachers as they implement new technology, being sure that that professional learning is available for teachers, administrators, and parents, as well as technology support that is very proactive and responsive when a need is arises. We'll be taking a variety of data collection back so that we can continually review the MLI and make it the best program we can build. Implementation support for teachers will consist of classroom and learning management in a future-ready classroom, which is what Jill had referred to. The idea of that is to really get them started. What you see on the little laptop screen is a website that's ready to launch as soon as we do get to the point of knowing what our, the end of the year and our summer will look like. When we talk about classroom management, we're talking about the physical space, classroom expectations, rules, and security. And so, we want to make sure teachers have a good background and are able to implement that piece right away. Learning management goes more into instructional design, assessment, teacher workflow, as it was referred to, and of course, digital citizenship. We can't move forward in a program like this without making sure that digital citizenship piece is included in all levels. We know that our new teachers that are coming in are going to need additional support for this implementation as well. So, once the implementation piece is supported, future-ready professional learning comes into play for teachers. So, this is the targeted professional development as well as the coaching opportunities that we'll make available in each of the buildings. We believe that the strength in moving forward are the availability of those instructional tech coaches that were added last year. They're crucial to the success of the professional learning for teachers and administrators. When we, when you look at research, professional learning is very much needed, but it's that coaching that will sustain what the teachers learn and actually have that implementation not be quite so messy and be able to really affect the student learning. We'll also be looking at outside resources such as conferences and visits to other schools. Administrators will also be offered opportunity to collaborate with each other and building leaders in districts outside of ours so we can learn from them as well. We have some of the symposiums we've been invited to scheduled coming up this month. And so, that process is already underway. And a real important part of all of this is future-ready professional learning for our parents. We want to support parents so that they understand what's happening in our buildings and to assist them in becoming future-ready parents. The information will be available at various parent meetings. PTA meetings are always great because they do get a very good turnout, as well as a lot of online resources. An FAQ file will be built out of all of their questions so that they can be easily referred to. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to David Smith for the tech hardware piece.
Okay. Well, I get to follow up with all the things and the dollar signs, I think, is what my job is tonight. I mean, so obviously, we've heard the power of, of the mobile learning implementation. And so, you know, what's it gonna take to, to implement? What do we see for the next few years? For next year, we'd like to, we propose to, the middle schools, basically to start with, to have a device for every students, every student from grade six through 12 next year. At the middle schools, we're looking at expanding, extending the cart model where there's Chromebooks available in the classrooms for the students to use all day long. But those Chromebooks will remain in the buildings. In other words, they would not be taken home, but they would be used and available to the teachers all day long, every day, and to the students, obviously. So, at the high school, the model we're looking at would be student-owned devices that they would have 24/7 take home and, again, with them all day at school. And all the students and teachers could count on them being available throughout the day. Some, let's see. The idea with a high school student, Chromebooks then with it being student-owned would be that the district would, would obtain the Chromebooks through our, you know, sourcing channels for, and I'll highlight later some, the value proposition of that. But basically, an excellent Chromebook, kind of a middle, middle-ground Chromebook, not too fancy, but also not, you know, not, not a consumer device that might not stand up with, with, to some, to some, you know, 24/7 use. So, the parents would pay the cost of the Chromebook in some fashion that we would have to discuss, whether that would be, you know, paying upfront or some sort of paying over time. I think that's definitely part of the conversation we have to have, not only with the board but with parents in the district to get some feedback on that. And then, the idea also would be that the students would, assuming they've had the entire Chromebook paid for, would take that Chromebook with them when they left District 205. So, they would, they would have the benefit of the device throughout the school year, every year that they're here. And then, they would keep the device, assuming it was fully paid for. Then, when it comes to Chromebook support, of course, you've heard about the Technology Services Internship Class, which is starting next year for three periods. The lunch periods at York High School. So, students would have that opportunity to get help with Chromebook repairs or other assistance that they might need. And not just Chromebook repairs, there's other aspects of the support program. And also, there's other things that those students are doing. But one component of that class would be to support the student Chromebooks. The technology team, my team, would have to obviously help that, get, get that part of it off the ground. So, we would be involved in planning and implementing the, that program, helping to get it off the ground. I do, the question has come up in the past, well, what effect does that have on, on the technology team in Elmhurst 205? Well, I think it is an investment in the beginning to get that off the ground. And we do anticipate, you know, having to invest in that and possibly not having a net gain the first year. But I think over time, if the TSI program works well and it can expand, that that would be actually investing in students and their, and their skills and their learning and not necessarily having to invest in additional adult technicians. So, I do think there's a payoff down the road. I do think it's an investment in the beginning in terms of man-hours. Chromebook repair replacement, with this model we're talking about for the high school, the families would be responsible for the cost of repair or replacement. The work, again, done at Elmhurst 205 in the technology support internship class, our technology services internship class, those costs would be just the parts. And actually, it would be just our costs for obtaining the parts, which of course, we get, can get in quantity with education discounts. So, basically, a repair for a Chromebook through District 205 would be much more affordable compared to what anybody would have to pay to get their Chromebook repaired in a shop, a third-party shop, or through the vendor, or through the manufacturer. Loaner devices would be available to students if their Chromebooks were in, in repair. And also, we're evaluating different options for helping, giving parents options for potentially insuring the Chromebook against damage or loss. Again, it would be totally optional for parents to even consider that. But we're looking, other districts have provided at least some suggestions for parents to look into if they're interested. It wouldn't be something District 205 necessarily would be involved in administering, but we could have some options available for parents to consider. Just some other details, the content filtering. We do filter web content within District 205. And we're looking at a technology to extend that to the outside of the network so that if it's a District 205 device, because there is a, there's a law with the acronym CIPA, C-I-P-A. It's basically Internet Protection Act, Children's Internet Protection Act. And so, we're required to make some effort to protect minors from harmful, harmful content. And so, we would look at extending that beyond the district network with the district Chromebooks. The Chromebooks would need to be managed by District 205. They'd be registered to the elmhurst205.org domain, which means they would be under our control, excuse me, our control. And there's some reasons for that. We, we do push some things out to those devices, such as the network configuration and other certain applications. But also, we do need to be able to control the device for assessments such as PARC assessments or other assessments that are online. There are some strict requirements, technical requirements, that require various settings to lock down devices during assessment. So, the students can't access other information while they're taking a test such as the PARC exam. So, we would need to be able to manage those devices. And then, with, if we could have a one-to-one environment at York, then we would be looking to redeploy some existing technology and take advantage of that, being able to fill some areas that we have, refresh that we need to do elsewhere in the district. But we would be able to use technology that's already in the district by redeploying some of that. So, it's sort of a side effect of going one-to-one if we're able to do that. Just wanted to illustrate the value proposition for Chromebooks for parents. I've had some people that I've been talking with wondering how that might look. And so, just, just an example for illustration purposes, these costs aren't necessarily what they'll end up, you know, being in the end. But there's something like this. A Chromebook, for example, the Dell Chromebook, that's, the new Dell Chromebook just released this spring. For the district, we could say, get it for $240. But if you go to the Dell site, which I did, and you actually pretend like you're gonna buy one, even with their discounts, you'd get it for $269. And that's, again, with their discounts. I mean, it retails for like 300-something, but you can get it for $269 on Dell's site. The Chrome Management License is $30. You would need a protective case. You can get it for all different prices. But basically, we're finding that the district would get about a 30% discount for volume over any, any price you'd be able to get on, on the market. So, an example would be a $35 case we could get for 25, say. Then, of course, the district does not pay tax. We would not, we would basically be selling the device to the parent at cost with, with no tax on that. So, then, we would have, the district is, I'm looking at some potential services that we might be able to, to employ to expedite the deployment, the preparation and deployment of the devices because there would be quite a number of them to process over the summer. That fee would be potentially somewhere in the neighborhood that we might look at paying. But when you look at the total cost for District 205 for a Chromebook, it's about $280 approximately. And a parent, a family would pay three, at least $350, and it would go up from there. And a point I want to make too about the support would be that it's free support at, at York, right? It'll be the Technology Services Internship Team. So, the only cost of the parent for a repair would be the, the parts cost that we would pay, which of course, would also be cheaper than you'd be able to get on the market. So, so comparing a cost, if you had a repair or a loss through a non-district device, you would end up having a significantly more, bigger expense there. So, the $350-plus is just your starting point, I think, when you have a personal Chromebook, is an example. So, that summarizes at least the technology part, the boxes and wires part. And I'd like to turn over the presentation back for, I think it's back to Dr. Fitzgerald?
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll be back in a little bit.
Yeah. We're gonna end with budget. So, anticipation. When we implement something new, of course, we'll have to have feedback and review. So, our plan is to do a pretty extensive feedback from all of our staff and our students and our parents. And we'd be doing that through surveys, through focus groups, interviewing certain people, you know, a random sample from the population. We've already done a time study, and we're going to bring some of this data back later in the year for this year of how our ITC in the year, for this year, of how our ITCs are spending their day. Are they doing co-teaching? Are they planning meetings with staff? You've heard them, that they're very involved with the staff on a daily basis. So, what does their day look like, and, and how different does that look now that we have the ITCs in place? Of course, we'll want to be looking at student work and Google Apps. And then, we will be developing future-ready curriculum from now on, and anytime we find something different, or something new, and it is technology, so it's ever-evolving, we would be making revisions to our curriculum during the summer. We would be bringing some teachers in to say, how do we have a future-ready curriculum that's going to give kids the access that they need? And then, any professional learning that we would need for our staff members would be planned and delivered, sometimes during the summer, sometimes through our ICTs, uh, ICTs, ITCs, and sometimes through our SIP Institute, or Late Arrival Wednesday, so we'd be able to really have all those avenues for us. Continued work, thank you. We do have some continued work. One thing I want to talk about briefly, and this is, is very much in its infancy, is looking at, how do we provide digital resources to students, so that they don't have the textbook purchases on top of Chromebooks? Clearly, the point of Chromebooks, too, is that access to digital information, especially in the sciences, where I often like to say, one day I went to sleep and Pluto was a planet, the next day I woke up and it wasn't, but in the book, it's still a planet, although I think it's going back, maybe, I don't, I don't know, I, yeah, I don't know. But, we really want to have access to that digital information for our staff, for our students. What you see here is a preliminary information that York has been able to pull together for the Science Department, I want to be clear, this is only the Science Department. And the way that reads, because it took me a second to read that, that graphic, because it looks like the numbers are going down, that's because that's the freshman class. The first one is our freshman class of next year, sophomores, juniors, seniors. Unfortunately, our seniors will not see a great impact, because we're not quite there yet with our staff, because it will take time to identify all of those resources that are out there, and make sure that they're good resources, and that they are reliable resources, and that they are reliable websites that won't disappear one day, or that they're appropriate for our students. So, the biggest impact that our staff, our parents will start seeing is definitely with our freshman group, and I think I even read, the biggest will start with almost our seventh grade. Now, what you have to understand, too, is if this is all pushed back a year, if we don't start MLI yet, you know, if we, if we go back a year, then the first class would be the class of 2021, which I think it is funny to see the class of 2020, oh, can't believe we're there. But, that would all push back a little bit, and keep in mind, too, this is just science. We'd be looking to do this for all of our departments, for all of our classes. Some, we won't be able to, you know, with ACP, we're going to be held to what IU asks us for a textbook, but certainly, our hope is to find a bigger cost savings for our, for our parents, so that we're finding the authentic online resources that our kids have access to, so that they are dynamic and not static. And then, here, you've, you've seen this through the committee work they've done, this is our future phases of a rollout of MLI, eventually getting to ITCs and future-ready classrooms EC12. So, I'm not going to go through it. Evaluation, we want to evaluate the implementation of MLI. In year one of the implementation, we're going to be asking ourselves whether or not MLI was implemented as intended. We cannot expect student achievement or growth at this point in the first year, we want to make sure that it's being implemented as intended. So, we'll be looking at, we'll be analyzing what professional learning was provided, and whether or not that professional learning was useful for our staff. Where on the SAMR model are we, and that was talked about, the SAMR model, which stands for Substitution Augmentation Modification Redefinition? Thank you. And really defining for our staff members what that looks like, and York has already done a lot of work on this, of what the SAMR model looks like in each of the different, different content areas, so that our staff understands what we're looking for, and back to that taking risks, administration is saying, yes, take some risks, this is where we want you to be, this is what we're expecting with the support of our ITCs and our teachers and administrators. And then, we'd ask, what feedback have we received from students, parents, teachers, administrators? We plan on bringing this report back to the Board of Education in March and June of every year, to let you know where we are going, because this is a big, a big program for our, our district. And then, of course, the March data would help us make recommendations of if we need any further purchases in terms of technology. Then, in year two, and beyond, is when we can start looking at student engagement. We'll still continue to ask, is it being implemented? What professional learning are we offering? Is it working? How do we do it better? What do we do? Then, we're going to start looking at future-ready students in schools. Is access to technology increasing student engagement? We cannot say that it will raise student achievement, there's no correlation, there's no research out there that'll say, increasing technology means increasing student achievement, but it can increase student engagement, and we know, the more students engaged in their learning is reflective, is metacognitive, is inquisitive, has access to information, the more likely their, their thinking and their achievement will increase. So, we'll be looking at whether or not the access to technology is increasing our students' engagement. Again, we'll come back to you in March and June of every year with a report, with a formal report of what we're finding is going on in our buildings. Onto the budget.
Just to wrap up with the dollar side of things, this slide depicts basically the technology expenses and revenues that we've estimated for next year, for next school year. To draw your attention to the second and third rows, let's say, transform, that would be the investment, really, in the transformational technology, the Chromebook leases, and other techno, associated pieces like carts and cases, and other pilot devices from, in the K5 classrooms, so that's about $264,000 of, of, of an investment in transformational technology. The rest of that mostly is the business-as-usual expense, you know, of running the technology that we already have, with refreshes, and software licenses, and repairs, and the internet, and so on, and so forth. So, I just wanted mainly to draw your attention to the $264,000 number, but if you also look at the subtotal of 2.75 million, that number is the comparable number that we've been talking about every year, that's, would be the PMA projection, which I think we put in at 2.8 million for PMA, so this tech expense budget comes in at just under the number that had been used in the PMA projections, although I admit, the future years down the, down the, down the line don't look as good, so, you know, it's, it's kind of, looks good now, but it looks a little challenging in future phases. The, the technology revenue at the bottom, it represents the $50 tech fee that all our students are assessed, and of course, there's a 6%, percent of families qualify for financial assistance, so we, we do not see, you know, the $50 for every single student, but that's factored into these numbers. I do want to also mention here that the Chromebook numbers that we're talking about are, we're actually going to be aided a little bit next year, and I'm not sure how public this is, but the 205, District 205 Foundation has, their board has voted to donate three Chromebook carts next year for the middle schools, they've informed me of that, and said it was okay for me to talk about it. So, I want to thank the foundation for their support, and that helps a lot by providing 32 Chromebooks per middle school, plus a cart, so that helps us move in a direction of, in the middle school one-to-one implementation significantly, and it's worth noting, and I, that those, that savings is, is reflected in those numbers there, so I, when you get a chance, if you, when you see the foundation director or board, it's worth a thank you to them, because they've definitely stepped up and helped us with that, so yes. And then, to round out some more budget information, this, this slide includes basically staffing and professional learning considerations. The top line shows what, last year, if you remember, the ITC new staffing that we put, the proposal we put forth included some contribution from the technology budget, and that $181,000 represents that same number, basically, that, that we talked about last year. And then, the 0.6 in the second row is the Technology Services Internship point, a teacher that was approved, or we were told we could move forward with that in a previous board meeting, so that's $57,000. So, the $238,000 represents money that, or, you know, salary and benefit money for staff that's associated with the Mobile Learning Initiative over the last couple of proposals that we've put forth. The next subsection over the learning and teaching shows money's allocated for future-ready professional learning that you've heard about this evening, $243,000, and then, the district section towards the bottom would show, again, the existing commitment that the board has made to the, the exist, the current instructional technology coaches that we've added, the $253,000, and then, we're, again, in this proposal, or this recommendation tonight, recommending or requesting 0.6 new ITC funding to, to provide 2.0, two, two full headcount of instructional tech coaches at York next year, if we're able to go to one-to-one, and honestly, even if, if we had some target that fell short of a one-to-one, I think the, the prevailing feeling is that we could still use the 2.0 instructional tech coach of support at York regardless, but the additional $57,000 is shown there, and I would like to point out that, given that on the previous slide, the 2.74, 2.75 million dollar number, which is under, under the 2.85, that that does have some headroom to, to add another $57,000, if, if the board is willing to consider that extra FTE, that would still keep us under the 2.85 million for this year, anyway, and of course, depending on what we discuss for future years, you know, sustainability, that's, I think, feasible, but it, it might impact plans for the future phases, but I just wanted to point out that there is room in the tech budget for next year, because we didn't run it up to the 2.8, we do have room if, if the board was willing to consider that. Okay, so, just a quick glimpse ahead, the other phases that we threw up there for a few minutes, or a minute or so, obviously have some cost to them, the technology line item is hitting $3 million, hitting an exceeding $3 million, the existing staff budget is, is going up, if, if we're adding more staff, and then, we, if we, in 2016, 17, if we were to add ITCs to the elementary level in any number, then that would, of course, would add more staff costs, so, and then we would allocate professional learning every year, of course, so I just wanted to illustrate, this is a really rough illustration, it's an estimate, it's based on, you know, the phasing that you saw in a previous slide, but of course, anything in the future is subject to discussion, and I know that there's a lot of other competing needs in the district, and there's some changing financial landscape, so I think these are discussions we're going to have to have about what the phasing might look like going forward in, in Elmhurst 205 for the mobile learning implementation. So, I think that, yep, that's it, and I think anybody on the team that's here tonight would be happy to answer, entertain any questions that you might have.
You know, they, they say, whoever they are, that enthusiasm is contagious, and it is, so you guys have done a great job. Any questions? I have a few, but I'll save mine for the end.
Well, first off, thank you, I mean, the teachers, I mean, it was just so exciting to hear from the teachers who are actually there and implementing, and what I really appreciated, there was a range of engagement, there was a range of excitement, and this was new for me, there was a range of, of classes that are taught, because immediately, I'm thinking, okay, works for English, works for social studies, maybe, I was really stuck on science and math, so I think I heard from a couple people on how these, this technology could also be applied to science and math, that's very, very good to know. I, I was writing a couple of questions down, and I guess, I'm wondering, some, this is a very technical question, we talked about repairs at the high school, and this ITC, or this, TSI class, sorry, to me initials, thinking about repairs in the middle school, how that might work, could we also utilize that, and then, how quickly would those students be ready to actually repair the equipment? Because I think we add that as a savings in our budget calculations?
Um, not really savings, no, I mean, I actually think it will take time out of my tech support team's, you know, weekly and daily tasks to help out with that, and there's definitely going to be some training. I'll go to the middle school question first, the way we're looking at it is, if there's a fail, a Chromebook, a student Chromebook failure in District 205, that Chromebook would, would make it back to York High School through the support channels that we already have to get, you know, equipment moved around, and then, the Student Technology Services Internship Class would actually be assigned to assess that, and, and determine whether that's, you know, repairable in their, within their means, and if not, it would be escalated to the, to the adult support team. So, so yes, we would, that team would also be taking in repairs from other schools, that we would, that my team would be delivering to York. The Chromebook's going to be coming back to York, anyway, for repair, and then it would, it would end up with the students to look at initially. But your, the latter part of your question about how quickly would they be able to start that, that's a very good question, and there's going to be some ramp-up time. For one thing, for example, currently, we're looking at Lenovo Chromebooks, and also Dell Chromebooks are the two sort of finalists, and both of those manufacturers have a certification process where anybody who really is involved in warranty repairs has to be, has to pass their basic assessments, their online assessments, and things about, about their knowledge and skills, so, and there, and there's some practice that they would have to get involved in, so it would be some ramp-up to get going. I'm hoping that in the beginning, there just wouldn't be failure after failure, you know, those things might creep in at a higher rate over time, and the students might be better equipped to handle them as they come in, but to your point, there, there might be more adult involvement in the beginning, especially, I think, with training the students. We're going to have to be involved with training them and getting them prepared to, to assess and, and fix technical problems.
And again, I mean, the, the excitement, the enthusiasm, all of the things that this technology could bring, I heard it, I heard it and felt it loud and clear. The devil is always in the detail. So, with that thought process in mind, I think there's two approximately, ITCs at York, and one at each middle school, and it sounds like everyone is very busy with this pilot. How would that work if everybody had it? Even if we're talking about going up 0.6, if everyone had these Chromebooks, how would that work for actually the, you know, the assistants, the coaching, all those things that have helped make this pilot work really well? Is it possible?
Coming from a district that, I'm sorry. The tech lady can't figure out how to use the technology. It's not a Chromebook. Yeah, the district I came from was approximately, both high schools together were the size, almost the size of York, teacher-wise and student-wise, and they had two ITCs. I think that's kind of why we're asking for that additional 0.6, is because I need Jill, I need her, if, if we're going to do this, and her and I can do that, we're hoping to build some capacity in our teachers this year, that's why this year is critical, we want to prepare them, ready to come in day one, we want them armed with this tool belt of tools, that they feel confident getting in front of their students, and teaching them with that computer in front of them, we want to build that capacity this year. Continuing into next year, we have some plans laid out to develop teacher ambassadors, so we want to work very closely with a team of teachers that can actually help spread their knowledge into their core areas, into their departments, so that we're not alone. We've mentioned many times that we, that you can't be alone on this journey, so we want to help build that capacity in our teachers as well. Do you have questions about that plan, other additional questions? Okay.
I suspect you'll be back up here again, but...
Well, we're going to get to the, the funding and all, but, okay, so I wanted to just kind of make sure that I have it clear. In what you're recommending, in all the documentation that we've received, is In what you're recommending, in all the documentation that we've received, as well as presented, and thank you all very much for all of the work behind the scenes as well, every day, as well as preparing for tonight and the presentation itself. You're recommending that in the year, school year 2015-16, that we would have a quote-unquote "one-to-one" at the middle school for all students during the school day, and a one-to-one for high school, that'll be all day, basically, is what I'm calling it. And so, it might get to follow-up question to you around, it sounds as though we've got various departments, I'll take the high school first, that are working on subject area, learning and teaching readiness, you know, so the teacher-ready, the student-ready, and I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, are we, are we ready enough to deploy it? Or is, are we at a stage like most districts are, is that this is how ready you are until you just put them in the hands of all of the students, all the teachers, and just let it continue to organically grow? Do you understand the question?
In talking with York administration, and clearly, you know, our ITCs and our teachers, and actually being invited, Dave, Kathy, and I were invited to a, I don't even know what committee that was, a technology committee meeting that they have at York with all departments represented. The enthusiasm is there. The excitement is there. It is about getting it in the hands of our teachers, because you don't know what you can do until you have them in your hands, and I think Charlotte Kula referred to that today as well. So, I don't know if I'm answering your question. I think we are ready. And I do want to clear one thing. High school is 24/7 access. Right. Yeah, so that's the 24/7 access. Middle school is during the school day access, yes. I think that, you know, in talking, we've done a lot of talking, I think the survey very clearly stated, we did talk about what would we be looking for in a number, and we're thrilled when we saw 95% of our staff is ready. My team is working very hard, too, to make sure that we have the professional learning available, and we will be available in the buildings as well next year to offer any support that we can for teachers. I know Chris Covino has been working on, and they referred Katie, talked about the professional learning plan, and how to use student late arrival Wednesdays, and the institute days, and the SIP days, that they're going to really be focusing on MLI and assessment next year. That's where their professional learning is going to occur, at York High School. So, I do think that the excitement is there, the enthusiasm is there. We're ready to support it.
Okay, and it sounds as though the departments, like the department chairs, as they have their department meetings, they're talking about it, or planning for how do we deploy this within our subject area for all levels and for each grade? And then, the same being true, I guess, for the middle school?
Middle school is definitely ready, too. And I did not talk about that, but then the middle school principals are, I know Gina's still here, and I know that they are very ready. And as we went around to the different buildings and talked about the curriculum development, the middle schools kept asking us, where are we with going one-to-one? We want to go one-to-one. We want kids to have access to information. We're ready for this. So I do believe, and again, the middle school had 91%. And when you really look at the 9% or the 6.8% total that said no's, it was really because they just need the professional learning. Let us know we're going to be supported. Let us know that we can try this out. Let us know that, you know, that we have your support, and, you know, we're ready to move forward. So some of those no's, we're kind of like, well, we can do this, you know, with other people behind us. So the middle school is definitely ready. And high school, again, that curriculum, or that technology committee we went to had every department there. And there were people that were like, we're scared, but we're ready. And every department was represented there. I know IAC has discussed this a few times. I know Wendy is on IAC. I think Diane is here, and could certainly talk to that as well, that IAC is ready. And the departments have already started this conversation of, what does technology look like in our classrooms? To be substitution, augmentation, modification, redefinition? Am I right? Yes, Sammer. What does that look like in each of our classrooms? So the buildings have been already having these conversations. Does that answer your question?
It does. And then, the last question is, since we've had these Chromebook carts and they're rotating, has every teacher been exposed to them and had that opportunity to at least try?
I would default to the buildings to answer that question. I see a lot of yeses.
At the middle schools, yes, because they rotated them. Oh, yeah, that's great.
We are quite excited. Thanks. I brought Denise up with me. Denise teaches two sections of guidance every day, and in a subject area that you might not consider the first one to use Chromebooks, we just wanted to share the excitement of, to echo what Charlotte said earlier, it's hard to find a cart on the calendar that they're being so widely used, PE, guidance, art, music, and your other content areas, that those teachers have been exposed, and the excitement is definitely there. People plan weeks, if not months, ahead to bump teachers during Park Test and other times to go into those calendars.
Barter.
And otherwise, it's building wide. There's not a classroom or subject area that hasn't experienced or used them. So particularly informative assessment, which I know has been a district goal this year and going forward to next, that's definitely an area that is, having computers readily available makes that real-time feedback so much more achievable. Want to echo that?
Yeah. To answer your question about how is it, you know, being used and are we ready in the middle school? I started 21 years ago in District 205 at Sandberg, and I took a class on how to use email. I mean, we have come a long way since I started, and I don't even see myself as that old. When I tell the kids that, they're like, what? You had to learn the computers? And as to like, are we, one instructional technology coach, Ben has been amazing in supporting us, and coming from someone who didn't know how to use email 21 years ago, he takes away that fear, but he's like, you can, you know, he's like a little coach in the background, like literally, or cheerleader. You can do it. And he comes in the classroom, but you know who's helping me, too? The other teachers. We're usually in professional learning communities to teach each other. The kids are teaching me. Today, I was like, oh, I forgot how to do this. Oh, no, don't worry, Ms. Hamilton, you just go here. And they're helping me, and a computer cuts down, and the kid comes from the other side of the room, and they're helping each other. I've never seen so much support, not only amongst our staff, but amongst the kids with the teachers. And they are so excited. There's nothing more exciting to a middle school kid than to prove to a teacher that you know something you don't. I can help you. I know how to do that. You know, so we have the support. It's not just through our instructional technology coaches, but it's through each other, and it's through the students. And talk about collaboration, it's not just collaboration amongst ourselves and with administration, it's collaboration with the kids. And we are using it, I used it today for Kahoot to do a formative assessment, do they understand SMART goals? I mean, they're teachers. I'm like, want to take my lesson and have the kids teach the teachers how to write SMART goals. And, I mean, all of us can learn, and it's a life lesson. How do you set goals for your life, and where do you want to go? And I was able to tell in less than five minutes how many of my kids were right on, and we can move on. It's being used to make a stress buster room. How can we, you know, relieve stress in our lives? And what would you put in a room to relieve stress in using a 5D planner? I mean, it's amazing what you can do to take our not-so-exciting, old-school dinosaur curriculum and make it so much more exciting and inviting to kids, and talk about engagement. It's amazing. The kids are all on board, and they're engaged in the lesson, so much more than any old-school lesson that I've ever taught.
As long as we have the middle school teachers up here, let me ask the middle school teachers a question. It sounds like these are going to be in carts in every teacher's classroom, kids are going to come in, take them off the cart, or they're already be on the desktop. Talk to me about a little logistics. First of all, what about homework? I mean, it sounds like this is going to be so integrated into the curriculum that my kid's going to come home and want to do homework on this. What do we do about that? And then, is it better to have a sense of ownership that every kid gets assigned one of these things? And then, what do we do about recharging them every night? I mean, I realize this is kind of nuts-and-bolt stuff, but my questions will get harder later, really.
Well, you're hitting on a few things that are keeping me awake up, you know, most nights. But we were discussing with the various middle schools, and it might look a little different in every school in terms of how that's going to be implemented, but we're looking at storage, charging solutions and storage solutions for each classroom. It may not be a cart, per se, it might be more like a shelf, you know, with power integrated in, and we're looking at some samples. But basically, one potential model would be that the seminar rooms would have Chromebooks in them, charging overnight in some form of storage, either carts or shelves. And then, the students would be assigned the same Chromebook. Every morning, they'd come in, you're Chromebook number two, I'm Chromebook number three, and I get the same one every day, so that there's a little bit of accountability and responsibility and some ownership of caring for that actual device throughout the school year. And then, the key would be getting those students who carry them around all day with them to get them back to their seminar room at the end of the day. So that, that's some of the work that we're doing with the middle schools right now, is determining the logistics of storing, charging, getting them out in the morning, getting them back at the end of the day, those sorts of things. But you're hitting on some, you're hitting on some points that we're discussing right now in real time, so, yeah.
Speaking from someone who uses in the classroom, the time it takes to come into a classroom, grab the Chromebook, get them out, get them back into the right spot, and so forth, you're doing that in every single classroom or who's ever using it. The time you're spending to do that, if you have it in the morning and after school, you're actually saving time and gaining more learning time in the classroom throughout your day, because you're not having to do that in every single classroom.
Yes, I don't know if I was clear, but basically, the idea would be the student would have the same Chromebook with them all day long, throughout the entire day.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you. I had just curiosity question. So, all right. Oh, I got more, I'll say them. Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, homework, homework. Thank you, thank you. Yeah, what about, I mean, if we're going to integrate these things, right? How, what do we do at night?
Of course, there might be some students who don't have computers at home, but the vast majority do today. And with the Google platform, we can easily have them work through there. When I talk about them having electronic folders, we at school can be pushing material into that folder, they go home, they open it up, and they do their online work.
All right. So it's all accessible from home?
I think that's something we definitely have to take into consideration when we give homework, for sure.
I'd like to speak to your question about the high school and whether all high school teachers have had access to the Chromebooks. We only have eight carts of Chromebooks at the high school, and we have made the conscious decision to put them in specific classes so they get that, so teachers get a deeper understanding. I will say that every single department has teachers who has had that constant access to the Chromebooks, and those carts do not sit in classrooms. If there's a day a teacher is not using it, that is getting lent out to another teacher who needs it that day as well. So I would say a large percentage of our teachers have experienced it, but every course team in every department has had some exposure to it.
Jill, as long as you're up there, let me jump in with a follow-up question to Karen's. If, next fall, every kid at York High School walks in with a Chromebook, every parent of York High School students write a check, how many letters are we going to get from parents who say, why'd you make me buy this thing? Because my kid only uses it in half their classes or a quarter of their classes. What's your, and I realize, you know, this is chicken-or-the-egg stuff, right?
It doesn't have to be zero.
Right. So, so, you know, what do you think the average percentage is? And do you think there are kids that won't use them hardly at all?
I doubt there will be any students who don't use it hardly at all. I mean, from our pilot, we have teachers, on average, using it most days a week, three to four days a week. There will be some teachers that rarely use it, there will be some teachers that constantly use it. I think it's hard to put an exact number on that, but think about how much kids use their textbooks. Are there classes that you have to buy a textbook for that they never open the book? I think they're going to see, students are going to be using these devices way more than they use their textbooks.
I'll get to textbooks later.
Okay.
Two things, want to go back to your homework question. We have an after, our computer lab in middle school is open after school every day for an hour, plus we have a study hall where computers are accessible there as well, so there's an hour every day after school. We also, as teachers, we're flexible, so if we know, we usually know what students don't have computers at home, we can make, change things and create, find another way. You know, we do this every day, I mean, differentiation all day long, and we allow that differentiation if it has to be this time for those who don't have computers at home. But like they said, majority of our students do have access to some computer. Even if it's on your phone, you can access Google. It's amazing. They have phones. And...
Then they do.
They do. They access it all on the phone, more than, they have better phones than I do. And as for teachers who use it, again, dinosaur, scared to death to use it, became Google certified, and you face it head-on because the kids are excited. When you see how excited the kids are about learning, it changes your way of approaching that classroom, and, okay, all right, I'm scared, and you just tell the kids, and you show your vulnerability. I walked into my classroom, and I said, hey, guys, I'm scared. I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how to manage this in the classroom, work with me. There's more, better behave than you would imagine, because they're excited to use them. And your colleagues, we, like I said, we use our PLCs, we collaborate. So if these teachers are nervous about using them, the other teachers, hey, we'll teach it, we'll show you. I have had more help from my fellow colleagues this year using technology than I've had for years, because they're like, hey, let me show you this, let me show you that. It will work. There's no question in my mind, and these kids will be excited to learn.
Thank you. Don't feel bad, I've been looking for a couple of Google mails for six months now. Be greatly appreciated.
I just really want to quickly address what you said about teachers not necessarily using them, because I've experienced this a little bit this year. So what happens is, it becomes kind of like peer pressure, and the kids advocate for themselves about using the technology. And it's peer pressure at its best, because we don't work in isolation when we teach. We do have our professional learning communities, and that's where our coaches really are an integral part. So it's almost like you, at some point, don't have a choice but to use it. And especially with the supportive administration and expectations being set for the devices and being integrated, then that's even another layer on top of that for teachers to be encouraged to use it. So rest assured, the kids will do it. If not, the adults, they will use them. So, that's it.
Because we're keeping the budget stuff at the end? No. I'm going to ask a question now. Dave, I had a question about the budget. I mean, I trust that our staff is, that you're going to cover the people, the process, the technology, so I trust all of that is going to happen, and you've thought about these things. So I wanted to ask you about the budget. So for the PMA projection, is it $2.8 million for the next three years that was part of the PMA projection?
I think, I think we plugged in the same number, or Chris plugged in the same number, just flatlined it down the road, yeah.
So for the next, just one of the next three years was over the PMA projection, right?
No, I think they both...
You got 2.7, 4.0?
Well, no, then one goes like 3.2, and the other one's 3.0, I think. They're both, they're all slightly, the next two years are slightly over. If we, if we stuck to the plan that, or the phasing that we had in that other slide where we tried to, you know, branch down into the K5 level in some fashion, then it would add expense.
So it's the...
Above the PMA projection.
Okay, so it's the two years, okay.
The number, the number, because you did a nice job, you took the hardware and the tech part, and you added in the stuff from LNT, and it got to 3.15 for this year, which is within 50 grand of maxing the budget. And I'm assuming that all of that, if you, so you're comparing the 4.050 to a 3.15 number? So I would, are you comparing that to this year, to Shannon's question? I guess the question is, how short are we? It looks like we're 900 grand short next year and 700 grand short the following year?
Yeah.
Because you're 2.8 on your budget, but you've got other portions of...
...the learning institution.
So if we benchmarked against this year and assumed that we were, because I know on the tech side, we fly... we flatlined this year across the rest of the years. If we assume that those slots in the LNT budget were the same, then you would take this year's 3.15 total and compare that to the next two?
Yeah, correct, correct. And then I was trying to find a way to compare apples to apples a little bit, because when we talk about 2.85 million, it's the technology expense number that we've been talking about in the past years. All those other graphs I've shown you in all previous years have been the tech expense. We really haven't talked about the revenues or the learning and teaching, professional learning and so on and so forth. But yeah, the total, we wanted to show you what the total expense was.
Right, but just to give you a benchmark.
I once know what the difference is, Dave. I think I asked that before, and I don't see it in here.
Well, I know, I wanted to ask this question. It's the technology line item is what I'm trying to get at for the next three years. So for next year, 2.7, well, yeah, that's technology, tech expense, and then 3.2 and 3.0.
That's correct, and that's just for the technology budget expenses?
And we're comparing that to the $2.8 million in the PMA projection?
That's the way I look at it, exactly.
As we just talked about, this plan has other pieces that come out of your budget. And if you baseline it off of, if you're telling us that 3.15 for this coming year fit into the budget at PMA, I think we kept it that way. So while we're short on the tech line, I think you need to look at where we're short below that. I just added it all up and said, 3.15 is what we spent this year. You need to spend 4.05 next year. You need to spend, I'm sorry, 3.15 is the forecast, and then the next year's 4.05, which is 900 grand more. And then the following year's 3.82, which is roughly 700 grand more than what our baseline was. So I think if you talk about what our shortfall, if what you're getting is, what's the shortfall in funding? Somewhere 900, around a million bucks, 900,000 bucks on year two and three. So I think that's kinda where we are.
What my point was, is we're not that far off with technology, from the technology budget that we projected, if you're just looking at technology. It's pretty close.
It's the staff.
It's just you're adding professional learning and staff.
It's the staff and the professional learning that bumps it up to the higher level, primarily. There's some additional technology costs, but you're, but Chris is right. I mean, the whole package is 900,000 more next, following year.
Refresh my memory, this is not net of new revenues, in other words, leasing these devices? And how big would that number be?
Well, okay, so, and that's a point I probably should've made on the, when I went through the budget. But basically, the costs that you saw in the technology budget are... The assumption that was made, and this would be that the high school Chromebook cost would be covered by the families minus the 6% financial waiver, or financial assistance number. So I'm not sure how to answer your question other than this is a net, this is a net amount. There would be, in theory, there would be Chromebooks purchased that would be then, most of the cost recovered back within the same fiscal year.
Okay, but you're showing both sides of that. So you are showing, as you say, a net amount?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But as long as we're on budget too, 'cause I'm not clearing this, have we addressed the elementary part of this as part of this plan that's being rolled out, or we're just talking here, middle school and high school?
The elementary component that's included in here is to pilot devices next year at the K5 level. There's some money budgeted. I think it's about, and it's really a number that could change, but it's about $50,000 to purchase of different devices that we'd have to discuss with the learning and teaching committees and others, to bring into the K5 level and work out, to try to figure out what the plan would be for the following years. So yes, there's some pilot money in there, Dave, but it's like 50,000, and that's it. Yeah.
So is that what you're saying for the last page, number 45, Dave, on the 2016-17 budget estimate? In those costs, you have included $50,000 as a pilot for elementary school?
Actually, in the 16, I'm sorry, the 15-16, so on page 43, in the, if you actually look at the third row down, it says K5 pilot devices, that 166,000 includes some money to buy some, you know, technology to evaluate and get feedback from that level, so that we can help plan, you know, plan future moves.
And then my question, though, is aft, right, but after that year, the first year, 15-16, then you've got 16-17, 17-18. I'm trying to get a sense of, do we expand on?
Yes, there's assumptions in there about expanding in K5 and expanding the device concentrations in K5 with some additional teacher supports, which is why the costs are going up. It's expanding into K5 that's ballooning the costs in the later phases. Correct. If you look at page 38, you'll see that increasing devices in K5, but not yet to the one-to-one level, but adding some additional devices, that would be what we would propose in 16-17, with some additional support with the ITCs at that level. So again, this is all subject for discussion about what we can afford to do, but that's just one scenario, and if that scenario was played out, the costs are shown on page 45. The estimated costs are shown on page 45.
Okay. For limited or pilot at elementary school?
Yes, and you would, you would approach, you would begin to have one-to-one concentrations in 17-18 at certain grade levels to be determined, but you would, we would try to, we would build it in. But again, I mean, it exceeds the projection. Right, right, with higher concentrations at the lower level. So if you're looking at K through 3, for example, you're gonna be, you know, 2 to 1, or you're gonna be some ratio that's higher than it is today. So you're gonna, you're gonna increase access in the K5 level over time, but the way I was looking at it was kind of, instead of going like one-to-one in one shot at K5, we would be kind of rolling backwards into the younger, you know, younger years, with input from the instructional experts as to which devices and what class, what does a future-ready classroom look like in K5, essentially. We have to define that. And that would start with the 15-16 school year, getting some initial devices, and to start to evaluate different benefits to, you know, because it could vary, everywhere from K to 5, you've got a lot, a wide range of skills and capabilities at that level, so you need to, you might not have one solution for the entire range of K to 5.
Well, that may not even be Chromebook, it could be iPads, that's what they use today.
Right. And technology's changing all the time, so in two years, it could be something different than we even know today.
Okay, and then the question that I had to follow up with the budget, and Michelle, to you. When we look at the 16-17, 17-18, the existing staff that increases, is that for ITC, is that for?
I was going, actually, I wanted to talk to that, so thank you for asking me that question. The new staff would be, we're looking at about four ITCs at the elementary. So it'd be one, approximately one per two buildings. You know, so we'd be looking at that. Plus, we'd be looking at the TSI at York becoming an additional 1.0 for a 1.6 total, because we'd be hoping that the TSI program, right now, is gonna be running through three periods. We want it to be all eight periods. And so that would require 1.6 staff, so that would be, so basically, that new staff is about five new staff members, covering K5 ITCs and an additional 1.0 TSI. And that's why you see it in 2017-18 as existing staff, no new staff, because we'd have them hired already and on staff. And then the professional learning, keep in mind, that's coming out of the learning and teaching budget. That's not part of the 2.8 PMA projections. That's learning and teachings budget that we're saying we're gonna still continue to support professional learning for our staff as we roll this out.
So with that, that 1,000 comes as a portion of your professional learning that's in your budget that has already been projected, which is in PMA?
It's not in the 2.8 PMA.
Correct, but it's...
And it's in the learning and teaching budget.
That's what I'm asking.
So the additional cost, again, what we're trying to get to, I think the board's trying to get to,
Correct.
is, as we said, about 800,000 the first year after next year, and another, what do we say? 700,000.
So I, you know, we're on a trajectory here, and I remember, Dave, talking to you, you know, two years ago, one, two years ago, and you had said, you know, "Either we stop or we're, continue on." Like, we're on a trajectory here, so I support this plan. And also because of, it's becoming a little bit of an equity issue now. There are some middle school students that touch a Chromebook once every two to three weeks. I mean, it's becoming really different now, some experiences. Some kids are having Chromebooks all the time, and others are not at the middle school level, and then we don't have, you know, ITCs at the elementary level at all. So we're, it's starting to become, you know, inequitable right now. We need to keep on this trajectory so all students have the same opportunities. And we can find a way, you know, to build our staff. That's where the additional cost is for, you know, for new staff.
Thank you. I mean, fantastic discussion. Sure beats the hardware discussions we've had in years past. But on that note, thank you, because I wanna remind everybody that three or four years ago, Dave Smith came to us with his team and Kathy and these guys and said, "We need to spend a lot of money on bandwidth and platform to have any chance of doing anything like we just talked about today." That vision started three or four years ago. And just to remind everybody, the iPad just celebrated its fifth birthday. So at the time we made the investment in that foundation, you didn't know where it was gonna go. And, you know, and to that point, you know, I know we didn't talk about elementary, but I think everything started there for our district five or six years ago. The PTAs have been extremely generous. They started putting, you know, iPads into the classroom. I think there were a lot of, "What do we do with these?" They followed up with support and professional development. I think, I don't wanna neglect that part of the conversation. We've elected a little different model there to create a sandbox that they can experiment with and pilot and play, and I would argue that you probably have all kinds of pilots going on at the middle school level that we could have similar stories with, so not to be neglected. We have made investments there. It just so happens that the PTAs wrote most of the checks, and thank you. But I think the challenge going forward with K through 5 is understanding, I mean, the pilot, it isn't like the pilot was where we were now in middle school and high school, where we started with some devices, trying to figure out what we wanted. The pilot there, the challenge is going back and finding out what's worked, and grabbing, you know, some of the experts at the elementary level and finding out how they do it, and how we can kind of coalesce that ground-up approach from them. So lest anybody think that we haven't done anything there, I wanna make sure that everybody understands that there have been significant investments made as a community in the K through 5, and there's been significant professional development and piloting going on there. We have not left the K through 5 kids out. The challenge, like you said, is how do we take the work that we've done and start to bring that under the tent? And the challenge, and the reason I think why we started here at the middle school and the high school too is because they weren't getting the resources from the PTAs. There was some realization that on a scale level, we needed to do this at the district level, and that's kind of where this grew out of. So again, I'm just a little sensitive to the K through 5, and folks saying, "What about me?" Absolutely. I think that, you know, the big question that we have, and please don't take questions as skepticism. I mean, I think we all are extremely excited about this, and the questions are more to understand it. It's just really, are we at the tipping point? I mean, have we hit that point where technology becomes self-reinforcing? And we've heard this story there, you know, that question where we've got demand pull from the classroom, which is what we always wanted. We didn't wanna top-down shove it in the classroom model. And I think there's myriad examples of how you can waste money doing that. And my question to you guys too is, you know, you've heard it here, are we ready for a full district rollout? Are we ready for a full York rollout? Do we think about rolling it out? And I'm not saying I'm advocating this, but have we thought about rolling it out by department? Pick the English department, pick the Science Department, and really putting a cart in every classroom there to increase, you know, that acceptance? And again, that tipping point question. I mean, it's like, I mean, it's a little bit like building a fire. You have a spark, and then you have flame, and then you have kindling, and then you have, you know, big logs, and if you do any of those too quick, you smother it. And we just wanna make sure that we don't smother it. And it sounds like, again, we've got great momentum, but have you considered, you know, are we ready for this big step, or is there an interim step, you know, within this? And I guess I'd be interested in your thoughts on whether that was discussed, and, you know, whether, you know, you really do feel strongly, like we've heard, that it's time for everybody to have it?
Just before you speak, I had a meeting with the York administration on this question, because I had the same questions you did. And so we had a pretty in-depth, you know, eye-to-eye meeting about whether, how ready they felt York was for full implementation like this. And there wasn't any hesitancy on the administration's part, that they feel York is ready, rather than go department, rather than go piecemeal, that their recommendation, they felt the staff was ready for full implementation and move forward next year. And that was my original concern, you know, and so, and I'm holding them, their feet to the fire on that one, because, you know, I had the same reservations. But after talking with them, I felt like they were ready to go, and they felt like they were more than ready for full implementation across the board. Now, to say, I think going back to Jim's question, are you gonna have every kid having Chromebooks used every day in every class right away at the beginning? Probably not, but I would hope that by the time we got to the end of next year, that predominantly, kids are using their Chromebooks, and that is being developed and going on, so that parents are not coming back to us saying, "Why did you ask me to invest this money when my child is not utilizing it?" And that's the challenge that we put to the York administration. We can't have that. We can't have the majority of parents at York coming back to us next year and saying...
Yeah, and to that end, I would just like to suggest that you, thank you for the cycle of reporting back. I would like to work together through learning and teaching, finance, to set some DPIs, performance objectives. You know, percentage of teachers using it, how many curriculums have been updated? I'm guessing your curriculum cycle is gonna increase. It's gonna get faster as far as the revisions go as the impact hits. It won't probably be as, it won't be every five or six years, deep dive. It'll be, but those kinds of things, I mean, let's talk about it, but I think we need to set, and it don't have to be quantitative, but some benchmarks to do that. And I think that we can do that over time. It doesn't have to happen tonight, but...
Margaret?
And I am, I'm going back, and Chris set the stage about how quickly times are changing, when he was talking about, well, actually, I guess Mrs. Hamilton did, when she was talking about email 20 years ago. But the iPad, five years ago, and it seems like just a couple years ago, we were asking about the cost of digital textbooks. And so I'm taking us back to slide 37, which now, it seems that there's an opportunity for one department of savings for this digital textbook. So I am optimistic, cautiously optimistic on here, and say, "Okay, so over the next couple of years, can we even, is that a possible another avenue?" Because this is just the Science Department. Are there other departments that also might have a savings that haven't been identified just yet, but that might come up over the next couple of years?
Yeah, I mean, I probably, obviously don't have the authority to really speak to this, but I have talked about the districts that have gone through similar, they're maybe a couple of years ahead of us. And what basically happened in another district I spoke to recently, was after one year, so they had to invest a year of time. After that one year, they did have a break-even point, which is, you know, maybe similar to this illustration here, where there was enough textbook savings after one year to basically offset the cost of the device in that year, you know. So, but every year after that, there was additional work done that added to that. And the story that I'm told, the analysis this district did, was a starting freshman in their district now, in four years, will walk out of that district with a Chromebook in their hand, and their family will have saved $1,300 compared to the traditional textbook for every, you know, route in four years. Now, it doesn't mean we're gonna have the same, you know, number, but it's still, it's an example of what another district actually has. They're partway through that journey. I think they're in their third year now. But they're anticipating that after the fourth year, that incoming freshman will have a Chromebook and $1,300 reduction in a four-year cost to go, in the textbook area. So I'm, I guess I'm hopeful that we'll see similar or something, you know, along those lines. It will take time, though. It's not, you won't see that right away. You'll get to break even maybe after one year, and then you'll start to gain after that.
I have a similar question to Margaret's, because I'm on page 37 as well. So, and let me ask... So, and let me ask this, our high school tech coaches. You know, as you well know, we finance our book inventory on the accounts of our freshman parents. And, you know, I am, you know, we would like to show our parents a cost savings because we're asking them now to pay more to purchase the Chromebook. Do you anticipate that the Chromebook will be, and there are digital resources that are bringing an adjunct to the textbooks or a complete replacement for textbooks? And how soon do you think that occurs? And I realize, I realize that we're all using our professional judgment here, and we can't really, we don't, nobody's got a crystal ball.
Awesome. Yeah, I can try to answer that, probably from my own experience. When I started in one-to-one classroom, I still use my textbook heavily. The longer I've taught in that environment, the more comfortable I am with the resources that are available online. I've developed my own videos. I've developed my own collection of things online that I feel is superior to the books that are available. And I've seen that happen with other science teachers as well. The, there's still a place for novels in English classes. There's still a place for some textbooks. I don't think we'll ever see everything go away completely. But I think the more teachers have some experience with this, the more we're going to see them say, "Oh, well, I could replace what I'm doing with this tool that's a lot cheaper."
What do we have in place to, when that happens? What do we have in place to make sure that the sophomore chemistry class you teach is the same sophomore chemistry class that one of your colleagues is teaching?
It's a great question. I don't think you can ever fully have the same experience with two different teachers, right? Two different people leading a class are going to be different. But at the high school, we work so closely together in professional learning communities. We meet once a week. That collaboration time that we have once a week together is invaluable because it allows us to get on the same page as much as possible when you're talking about the big targets, the big activities. And that support comes from the administrative level. I feel like we have that support across the school for getting teachers who are teaching the same course on the same page. And I think that would continue with the Chromebooks as well. As we're talking about digital resources and Chromebooks, that support is key, and I think that support is there.
Do we need more collaboration time to ensure that that happens?
I will never say no to more collaboration time.
I can speak to that course team, you know, having that same experience because I hear Jill's, not Jill's, kids that aren't Jill's kids that are in other chemistry classes come up to me and like, "Hey, are you that voice in all those flip videos that we watch in class?" So they are sharing these resources that they're creating amongst each other. These kids know her voice because she's created these screencasts. So when teachers are given this technology and this opportunity to create and develop their own custom fit, it's like making your own car. Do you want to buy the one in the lot or do you want to order one online with all these different customized pieces? Some of these online digital resources will let teachers customize their textbook. They can pick and pull chapters. They can insert their own content. We went to a session at ICE where math teachers in Naperville were making their own textbook with interactive videos, with interactive manipulatives that students could do within a digital textbook. So I think we're at a chicken-and-egg problem right now. We need to give the teachers the technology so they can create these experiences for their students. I can't speak enough to that 95%. I don't think there is another district in our vicinity where you would poll the teachers before going one-to-one where 95% would say, "I'm ready. Let's do this." So how do you decide what course teams say, "Hey, you guys can have a cart, you know, this class can have a cart?" And how do you decide that? That's an equity thing. Like, I cannot say enough, that 95% is just, it's unbelievable. So, we're ready.
Let me just make one comment to, just like, just like the network backbone, without it, again, that's a chicken-or-the-egg problem, right? We wouldn't be having this discussion if we did not have the bandwidth available to do this. So the next step, now we're adding the Tinder, right? The devices in everybody's hands. And I just want to assure everybody that's sitting in this room, that's talked to us tonight, you've seen us question, you know, the living daylights out of this thing, okay? It's because we're charged with the idea of making sure that this fits in the budget because we know that once you go and implement this, that there's no turning back, that we have to fund it. We just have to make sure the money is there to fund it year after year after year. So all of our consternation here is not because we're as excited as you are. We just got to make sure that it's going to fly forever. So that's all this discussion that you're hearing tonight. So...
So with that, two pieces. One, Dave, so is the bandwidth going to handle all this capacity? Always the question from the IT people.
I believe that we're good to go for sure next school year, but I have to say that I believe we may need to look at our internet connection, our internet bandwidth possibly for the following school year. So what I would be doing is monitoring that closely and then coming to the board with some updates and projecting whether or not, because that would be an additional expense. But actually, to be honest with you, in the budget numbers that you saw for the future, I already assumed that there would, that there might need to be an increase. So I've kind of built that into those numbers already.
Doing your job. Thanks again. And then, so the question about the textbook. We always think that once you go digital, that you can replace textbooks, but a lot of times you have subscription costs to the same sort of content. So is that reflective in these costs?
I think when you look up there, sometimes it's, right, you don't have to purchase the actual textbook, but you have to pay a fee to get the online textbook or the e-version of the textbook. But what we would also be looking at is what's called open source, which is free information that's out there. But again, that takes time for our staff members to find that information, you know. So you don't need a textbook when you can go on NASA.gov and get real data, real information right then and there. Is that enough information? We need that we don't need a textbook. There are textbooks out there right now that are free as well. CK12 is a company where you can get free textbooks. Our staff would have to vet those textbooks and make sure that they really are what our students are going to need. So there are ways to get there. It's time. It's time to allow our teachers to look through all those resources. And then the curriculum allows the time for them to say, "These are the resources," and provide a medium for them to collect all that information so that the staff members have it as they're designing their instruction.
I would say this. I think there's great potential and potential savings in this, but I don't think you want to oversell this to say, "Oh, we're going to eliminate textbook fees in the next year or so." I think, you can't say that. I think there's great potential here. I think, given resources and time, teachers will, this will open up a whole new avenue of how we deliver instruction and curriculum, but it's not going to happen overnight. So I would caution just overselling that to the parents and community because I'm not sure we're going to be able to follow through with that.
And that's my, that was my point and why I was bringing it up because it's, I have not seen that anywhere. And so I'd even be cautious of these numbers, right? I mean, or even talking about this at this point. There's a phase out, but...
I don't know that I'm an expert, but I did help kind of put some of these numbers together. I will say that a typical science textbook is a hundred-some dollars. Those of you who are parents probably know better than I do exactly what that cost is. And so the parents front that money and then get a portion of that back, a small portion. That, the high-predicted, what do they say, 70% return? That number is incorporated in these numbers here, that, you know, the buy-back option for books that have already been used. The online books that are available range from 15 to 50 dollars for the same textbooks we're using right now. You could get that same textbook, for the biology book, for example. It's a hundred-some dollars to buy. You get a little bit of it back at the end. If instead they use the same textbook, the online version, that's 15 dollars a year. So that's, right there is a huge cost savings. You know, keeping the same curriculum that we have right now, we could do that. You know, and I think that these numbers do reflect that. You see that the seniors don't have any cost savings because they don't all take to the same science class. So this is just looking at biochem and physics.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So I guess my bottom line is really about, you know, the budget. We all have talked about this. We've heard from our district, and the population keeps growing, which is exactly what you want, right? So we can't deploy it without sustainability, you know, resources, whether it be financial, people, et cetera. And we can't pull it back once we deploy it. And we're kind of down that road, but we could, I mean, this is a point of, we have to make the decision. So how do we continue to afford it ongoing? I know that we have PMH projections for the next three years, but, you know, how do we go through that process and make that decision or get to that point, I guess, is the next steps?
I guess a question, Dave, is year one, if you didn't do year two and three, is year one continue at the rate that year one's at? So worst case is if you fund next year and you just kept funding it, you could just take that budget amount and just take it out. It's additive the next couple of years, four more to it. What are you committing to if you, if you agree to this year, you're committing to high school and middle school, and that's it?
It just held flat. I think there might be, on the technology line, there might be a slight uptick because a couple of anomalies are occurring next year with like some warranty costs and things that, that come into, you know, like there's this three-year cycle on some of our Cisco SmartNet warranties, for example, that we would have to decide, do we re-up on another three-year, which would be a bit of a chunk of change. So the, I think it's more, you would more or less be, more or less be having a flat budget, except there might, like next year, I know there's an anomaly with our Cisco SmartNet, for example, which would throw a little bit of a small spike of a couple hundred thousand. I don't know if I'm answering your question, but I do...
I mean, I guess what I'm asking is, could we commit to year one and then send year two and three kind of back to committee to talk about pros and cons of how we could fund it or stretch it or, you know, what we can do with it? Do we have to make that decision now?
Absolutely. My opinion is that I think next year, the 15, 16, is affordable within the budget parameters that have been laid out already. Years two and three of this plan, like I said kind of earlier in the presentation, I understand there's fiscal challenges.
But by committing to year one, you're not killing yourself in year two and three.
No, I think we can sustain two and three at the level that you're at. I think that to advance it beyond that is where the tough, tough...
Right. And that's the sell beyond that. But I think, like Jim said, we're, we want to make sure that, once we start something, you can't stop it. Now, we can talk about how you, how you meter, what you add to it, and that would be the discussion. We say, you know, we approve what you got going on now. And then we need to talk about how we add to it in future years and how we roll it in. You've given us one option, which costs, you know, 900 more and 700 more, and we need to talk about how to either fund that or stretch it. But we could still afford one right now.
Correct.
And so I think that's one thing that I think we need to continue. And then two is just a discussion of the funding model for the devices. I know we talked about, you know, there's an ownership concept, and I think that you put them up for sale, and, you know, we obviously have to have a financing option in there and how that works. You know, how do we deal with free or reduced lunch and that kind of thing? Do you need that answer tonight on how that goes? Or do we have an opportunity to take that back into, you know, committee and talk about various funding models and come back to...
I think we have time to discuss the funding details and the different options that we have, but I do think, I don't know if you're asking me this, but I do think that an indication about whether the year one plan is acceptable and doable to the board so that other things can start to happen, like the professional learning and the ITC hire, that would be beneficial to have some direction tonight on that. But from a, from some of the details about how to, you know, how to deal with the implementation of, you know, financially, I think we can discuss different options.
On how to pay for the devices?
Yeah.
You need to know about people. What else tonight?
Well, the things that I think Michelle mentioned way in the beginning was the 0.6 ITC, which I...
That's people.
Which is people piece, which is that $57,000 line item. That would be additive because that's not, wasn't previously, we haven't gotten to go ahead on that previously. And then the other piece was...
Professional learning. York has already worked out a plan to offer some professional learning prior to the end of the school year, which is not that far away for us. And they would like to, and it's providing it during the school day with staff, and so they would like permission to start moving forward with that planning.
But just to sum up and reframe, what you're asking for is whether we support the first year plan. That's all you need to know tonight. And you're telling us that that fits within what we already expected from money perspective?
We're, just fairness to the board, we did not ask for a decision tonight.
Right. What's the timeline, what's the timeline for that?
We would probably come back to the next board meeting and get a sense of two things. Do you want to go ahead with year one? And then, we need to then talk about years two and three, and I did, just in open discussion. Some board members have contacted me on this issue and said, "Well, isn't the other option, if this is a priority for the district, we start building budgets to start reducing in other areas, other departments, to fund this technology initiative?" And that is true. That is the other option. So it's not always just looking for increased revenues. The other option is, you start looking at paring down budgets in other areas to fund this initiative. So, you know, that's another discussion the board's going to have to have in the future.
Right. But you've got, like, a year before you have to decide that.
Right.
Which you guys need to know now, as soon as possible, is whether year one, which again, I think already, what you're telling us, it already fits in the budget that we've allocated for that year, for next year. So...
If you go to slide two, which was topics for discussion, was originally, you know, what we'd be asking. And it's all about year one. It's not at all about year two. Looking at the high school students purchase the Chromebooks, leasing the middle school, getting cart shelves, purchasing the K5 pilot devices, which is part of year one, and then the TSI person, the teacher, the ITC, professional learning. So we're asking for year one, but not today.
Frankly, it's up to the board. I think we, I have committed that we would not present something to the board and ask the board to vote on the same night. I mean, that's a commitment I made to the boards. Yeah, so it's your decision, but I'm fulfilling my responsibility.
And actually, in two weeks, I was intending to come back with actual board recommendation for lease purchase of equipment and things like that to, if not for the entire thing, whatever, you know, there's certain pieces that we do need to move forward with refresh. The basic stuff that we would always do anyway, I'm going to be coming back in two weeks for...
Hardware.
Hardware. Right. I'm just saying, there will be pieces of this that I, that you will see recommendations in two weeks coming in.
The sooner the better on professional development and people. And it's in the budget already.
It's in the budget already.
So I guess I would ask the board, whether you have a problem approving the people side of this, and we'll talk about the hardware in two weeks.
Yeah. I'm good with that. Board good with that?
I'm good with that. It's in the budget. I mean, it's...
Do we need a head nod or do we need a motion?
It's already budgeted.
What do you want to do?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know. You want a formal resolution or do you just want to, you guys have budgeted it, let's move?
It's in the budget.
You're on video. We can go back to the recording.
That's why. Now it all, now it all comes together for me. That's why we have that man back there. All right. So in, little head nod, good with what we've seen, move forward.
For 15, 16, yes.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right. The meeting gets much shorter from here. I can assure you that. In fact, I think we can hyperdrive this in 10 minutes or less. So...
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. There's school tomorrow. My alarm clock goes off at 5:00 a.m. I mean, I like an all-nighter as much as the next guy, but please, thank you very much for coming tonight. Thanks for staying the duration. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. All right. So next, superintendent's consent agenda. Items A through F, anybody want to poll any of those items? Okay. Then anybody got a motion?
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda, items A through F. Do you want me to list them?
No. Unnecessary. This one.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Shannon. Let me see here. We're not spending any money, are we, Mrs. Walsh?
No.
Oh. Okay. Moved by Karen, seconded by Shannon. Let me see here. We're not spending any money, are we, Mrs. Walsh?
No.
Oh. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. And on the superintendent's agenda, action items, approval of donation to York High School, again, we make these separate, so we can thank, in this case, the Elmhurst Eagles. Do you want me to read this? What this is all about? Elmhurst Eagles, making a donation to the York football coaching staff. They're, the Eagles coaching staff and players are planning to work with York on a football camp this summer. In lieu of compensating the coaches and players, the Elmhurst Eagles youth football program would like to donate $3,000 to the York football program. It is a great opportunity for the students and coaching staff to collaborate with the Elmhurst Eagles and promote the fundamentals of football. The funds will provide the football program with the ability to buy new equipment, along with team-building activities. Recommendation is the Board of Education approve a $3,000 donation from the Elmhurst Eagles youth football program, and this donation is accepted in accordance with policy 8:80 gifts to the district. Anybody have a motion for that? And you can paraphrase. It's okay.
I move that the Board of Education approve the $3,000 donation from the Elmhurst Eagles youth football program. This donation is accepted in accordance with policy 8:80 gifts to the district.
I'd second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Margaret. Mrs. Walsh, do we need a roll call, or we just, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That motion passes. All right. Anything under Board Communications?
I have one.
Okay?
I wanted to make an announcement. Saturday, April 18th, 5:30 to 9:30, John and Emily asked me to make this announcement, because they're the liaisons for Lincoln School. That school is part of a fundraiser for Marshall Bell, who has muscular dystrophy. So, there's a fundraiser, Saturday night, 5:30, 9:30, at Knights of Columbus.
Actually, I have a letter I was going to read, but you know what? At 11 o'clock, nobody is listening, so I'm going to save that for the next meeting, when everybody's a little fresher. So, that leads us to upcoming meetings. All of, well, these don't all occur in this room. Thursday, April 16th, Performance Management Committee at 7:00 p.m. in this room. Monday, April 20th, is the Learning and Teaching Committee meeting at 7 o'clock in this room. Saturday, April 25th, is a special closed-session board meeting. We're interviewing superintendent candidates, followed by Monday, April 27th, same thing. And those locations are to be determined. We're looking for an off-site location. And then, Tuesday, April 28th, is our regularly scheduled, next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30 p.m. in this room. Anything else? That leads us to, nothing else left on our agenda, so this meeting is adjourned.